Welcome to our Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 Exeter Township School District Committee of a Home Meeting. Prior to this meeting, the Board met for an executive session regarding personnel. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's Constitution and our individual liberty and justice.
Mr. Feig, can you please take roll call?
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
Sorry to interrupt, I'm hearing there's no audio potentially.
On the website?
On, yeah, on the live stream.
Thank you.
John Fidler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger?
Here.
Jason Mill?
Here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter? Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
Nine present, none absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine Board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the Board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne, and the members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Cindy, Substitute Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of Pupil Services, Dr. Kristy Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. We'll be going to the super first.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I just have a couple of comments to make regarding the tragedy last week and School District's response, and if you bear with me, I do want to read it because it is a heavy topic, so I do want to make sure I say things correctly. Last week, we once again had tragic events unfolding in our schools. This time, it was a mass shooting at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, where nineteen ten-year-old students and two teachers were killed. The Exeter community grieves with the families and the community in Uvalde. Every one of our teachers and staff members think of these students, teachers, and their families as we go about our jobs of educating our students and working to keep them safe. I want to thank our staff, who showed up the next day with smiles on their faces to reassure and comfort students while there was grief and hesitancy in their own hearts. But that's what our teachers do, they show up. Research shows that school safety is a complex issue that includes families, communities, schools, and the larger society. Preventative measures like finding and helping students that are struggling are important foundational steps to school safety. Here at Exeter, we work to do just that. To identify students who are struggling, build connections for those and all students, and to get help to those who need it. We will also be adding some resources on our website for students and parents to use. The District engages in a continuous cycle of monitoring of school safety needs and, with the support of the Board of Directors, have made these issues a priority, including current discussion and consideration for a new position of a School Safety and Security Coordinator. The District has responded to these needs by hiring school social workers, monitoring and improving this building physical infrastructure, updating policies, running drills, cooperating with law enforcement agencies, and connecting families with outside resource services. All of this can only be done with community support and resources. We need federal, state, county, and local agencies to help us ensure the safety of our students. Events like this give us all an opportunity to pause and reflect on the relationship between our schools and the community. For now, I ask for a moment of silence if you wish to remember all of the victims, their families, and those impacted by these tragedies. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morzuski. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the Board Committee of a Home Meeting, May 3rd, and Board Voting Meeting, May 16th? Thank you. Next is recognition, Mrs. Wilson?
Yes, we are fortunate this evening to have with us our Athletic Director, Mr. Tom Legath, and he has brought with him some of our outstanding student athletes. Mr. Legath?
Testing, testing. All right. Thank you again. We're here tonight to honor our fall, winter, and spring athletes from this year. We have quite a few, which is a, which is a great accomplishment. I thought about tonight before I came here, and when you have, when you have teams, individuals have their success, but when you have teams in the fall that are playing into December, in the winter that are playing into March, and in the spring that are playing into June, I can say that there's something going right. So, congratulations to all the kids this year, the coaches, and the teams. Congratulations. Up first tonight is Maddie Forey. Right there. So, Maddie, and everybody, you're gonna follow along. So, no, you're right, you're okay. So Maddie Forey was our 2021 Girls Volleyball Burks County Player of the Year. She is a three-time Burks County Player of the Year, which she's one of seven girls in the history of Burks County to be a three-time selection. She was also a three-time All-District Three member, and she was a two-time All-State selection, with this past senior year being All-State. Coach Grove, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, spoke so highly of Maddie's defense, and he said that she is the most defensive player in the history of Exeter Girls Volleyball, and it's not close. So Maddie is going to the University of Scranton to play girls volleyball. Congratulations, Maddie. Next is Tanner Karis. Tanner Karis was a member of our boys soccer team this year. Tanner was All-County. He led our team to a Section One Championship and was a Burks County finalist for our soccer team. Tanner was also named All-State this year for our soccer team, and Tanner is going to Penn State Burks to play soccer. Congratulations, Tanner. Next, Colin Payne. Colin was a member of our football, our District Three Championship Football Team. He was our quarterback. He was a member of our basketball team, where he averaged nineteen points a game, five rebounds, and two steals. He had an eighty-nine percent free throw percentage. He was All-County, and he was also named to the five-a-third team All-State. Colin is also on our baseball team, which is still playing tomorrow against Redland at four-thirty at Exeter. Congratulations, Colin, for all your accomplishments this year. And Colin is going to Alverni to play football and basketball. Next, I'm going to introduce our wrestling coach, Kevin Oswald.
I'm gonna introduce Johnny Miller. Wanna give some accolades to Johnny. Johnny was DCIA County Champ this year, Section One AAA Champion this year, District Three AAA Champion this year, NPI AA Fourth Place finisher. Season record was forty-four and four. His career record overall was one-hundred-and-thirteen and twenty-nine. Forty-two pins and twenty technical falls in his career, which is pretty impressive overall. Johnny was a three-time district qualifier during his time here at Exeter. He's a twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two Burks All-Star Team member, which he won. Actually, only two kids on the team won. Johnny. He was voted Burks All-County Team. He was invited to participate in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two Team of the Stone and beat Pennsylvania's double A state championship. Johnny will continue his academic and athletic career at Lockheed University.
Thank you, Coach Oswald. Next, our girls wrestling coaches, Jamie Harner and Kristen Swartly.
Hello. All right, Chris and I are here to introduce Molly Lubinow. Molly competed on the boys' and the girls' wrestling team this past winter season. Some of her accomplishments and highlights are that she earned third place in the regional girls tournament, going four and one with four pins. She earned sixth place in the My House Pennsylvania Girls High School State Championship, earning sixth place going three and three. Her overall record for the girls' season was nineteen wins, fourteen of those were pins, and five losses. In addition to wrestling, Molly is also involved in other extracurricular activities, which include soccer, lacrosse, chorus. She was in the ensemble for the musical, which did interfere a little bit with wrestling, but they did give her a big shout-out after we brought her back from states. We actually had to drop her off in the cafeteria so she could celebrate with her musical teammates. Throughout her freshman year, Molly has been a high-achieving student athlete by earning Golden Eagle Honor Roll each quarter. Congratulations, Moll.
Next, our boys tennis coach, Mike Herman.
Hello. I'm here today to introduce Teddy Snyder. He is my number-one tennis player on this year's team. He had a Burks County record of seven and one this season, and overall record of tennis to work in the place in these competitions. Be very proud of that. He won the, won singles county championship, gold medal, and beat the undefeated returning champion, that trader, Redding, which is a big accomplishment. He qualified for both District Three Singles and District Three Doubles this year, and he became Burks County Player of the Year, and he also is Burks County Tennis Association Player of the Year. So, congratulations, Teddy Snyder.
Our boys and girls swimming coach, Ashley Rosa.
Hi, everyone. It was a really exciting swim season this year. Just to talk about a couple highlights, the 200 medley relay, which was made up of Lauren Ramsey, Megan Unruh, Hannah Hellman, and Gabby Istamiz, were district champions, sixth at states, had a CPL league record, an Exeter school record, and also, we're very excited about a Wilson pool record, and also is considered All-American consideration time, which is the top one hundred times in the country. In the 200 free, Megan Unruh was second at districts, third at states, and an Exeter school record. In the 200 IM, Lauren Ramsey was fifth at districts, eleventh at states, and another Exeter school record. In the 500 free, Megan Unruh was a district champion, third at states, an Exeter school record, and an All-American time. In the 100 backstroke, Lauren Ramsey was second at districts, seventh at states, an Exeter school record, and also All-American consideration time. And the 400 free relay, made up of Hannah Hellman, Lauren Ramsey, Gabby Istamiz, and Megan Unruh, were second at states, seventh, second at districts, seventh at states, an Exeter school record, and All-American consideration time. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So, just to clarify, we have Megan Unruh all the way to the side, Gabby Istamiz, and then Lauren Ramsey. Thank you.
And our boys and girls bowling coach, Lou Ellis.
Well, I've been doing this for quite a while. It's twenty-seven years since I'm coaching bowling. But this was one of our best seasons. The last four years have been very good. I have Keith Lurch down the far end here. Keith was having a breakout season this year. He averaged over two-twenty in the league. He was third in average. He ended up being Player of the Year. He was voted by his peers. The other thing about Keith is he had the highest series in the league, with seven-seventy-three. And not only that, he is the Mr. Energy of our team. Good or bad at times, he has the life and the heart and soul of this team. And his team, his teammates do hit a lasso once in a while holding back. We were very successful as a team this year. We won the Eastern Regional Tournament, running the table, finishing, we proceeded sixth and went all the way to the championship. Back in December in the icebreaker, we made the finals of the initial tournament, breakout the season. Qualified for the state tournament. And as always, we didn't make the final match. It was just, we were fifth place out of the twelve teams that makes states. Two pins we missed by this year. One pin last year. So, this team is really good. Just didn't get over the top there. Another gentleman, well, Keith also, he medaled in the DCIA tournament. He was in fourth place. So, even though he's a really good individual bowler, he had his breakout year this year because he had to relearn his bowling back in his freshman year. He's our captain, and he's only a junior this year, so he has one more season. The other gentleman is Ethan Reimer. Best bowler I ever had. Four years. Two years All-Division One. Two years All-County now. Won the District Three Singles Tournament. He was sixth place the last couple of years in the DCIA Tournament, so he medaled. By far, he was instrumental in the state tournament. He was voted with the second highest score in the state with a six-seventy-seven score, so he made the All-State Team. Ethan, you could say, shows it on the lanes. Doesn't talk. Can be good at times. But I have a few other guys that don't speak, so I have a hard job ahead of me in the future. Gonna have to regroup this team. We have some young players on the JVs, and I think we can do it again. Three years, we made the state tournament in a row. That's unprecedented from Burks County. Nobody really does that. So, really proud of our season. Our other three starters, Colson Chaconis, Landon Gogler, and Connor Freewall, I believe they're here tonight. They're fabulous kids. So, on to next year. Thank you.
Our cross-country, indoor track, and track and field coach, Jason Holbrook.
Thank you, Tom. On behalf of Coach Schaefer, Coach Echol, Coach Bukowski, Coach Keith, and the rest of the coaching staff, I would like to thank the Board for taking this time to honor not only our track and cross-country athletes, but all of the athletes here tonight. Our girls' distant medley relay team, consisting of Maddie Holbrook, Lynn Shabick, Gabby Keith, and Kira, Kira Mar, earned fifth place at the state indoor track meet last winter at Penn State. Going in, they proceeded thirteenth, and they exceeded the expectations, like I said, they placed fifth. If you're wondering, the distance medley relay is a race consisting of four athletes, each running a different distance. The order of distances are the twelve-hundred meter, four-hundred meter, eight-hundred, and sixteen-hundred meter. So, just to go over each athlete that was in that relay, we have Maddie Holbrook. As a freshman, Maddie earned a spot, a spot on the state cross-country team last year, running out at Hershey in the fall. And she was, of course, a member of the distant medley relay team last winter in indoor track. She ran the twelve-hundred meter leg of the relay. Her mile time is a five-twenty-four as a freshman, and she placed tenth in the county. Maddie is looking to be one of the top returning runners in the county next year. Team captain, earned a spot at the state cross-country meet last fall as well, and as also as a member of the girls' relay team on the DMR, distant medley relay, last winter in indoor track. She ran the four-hundred meter leg. She's a five-twenty-six miler. She placed fourteenth in the county. She will be continuing her academic and athletic career at Shippensburg University, where she's gonna be majoring in exercise science and competing in cross-country and track. The two girls that are unable to join tonight, Gabby Keith and Kira Mar. Gabby Keith qualified for the state cross-country meet in the fall. She ran the eight-hundred meter leg of the relay last winter, and she qualified for the state outdoor track meet this spring in the eight-hundred meter. She'll be a junior next year at Exeter, and she has a very bright future. Team captain, Kira Mar, qualified for a cross-country state meet, ran sixteen-hundred meter leg of the relay. She'll be attending Lafayette College, majoring in mechanical engineering, and a member of the cross-country and track team at Lafayette. As far as the boys, we have Jack Sahada. Jack Sahada was a team captain. Let me go back. Cross-country, girls, we won counties for the first time in a very long time. They did an amazing job. Went to districts, placed high enough in districts to make states as a team as well. Boys, Jack Sahada, team captain. He had an outstanding junior year of cross-country. He steadily improved throughout the season and earned a spot at the state cross-country meet in Hershey. He's a four-forty-four miler, placed ninth in the county. Jack will be a senior next year, and he's going to be the leader of the Exeter cross-country team and definitely be one of the top runners contending for the Burks County Championship next year, as well as placing very high in the district. Alex Holbrook, team captain. Qualified for the state cross-country meet last fall, and the sixteen-hundred meter run in the spring despite battling illnesses both at the, before the cross-country championship, and also track, which set him back, but still proceeded to qualify for states. Qualified for the Nike National Indoor Track Meet, sixteen-hundred in New Balance National Meet, as well as the, I'm sorry, sixteen-hundred at Nike and the thirty-two-hundred at New Balance. He'll be attending University of Pittsburgh this coming fall. Will be on the cross-country and track team, majoring in business. And our boys' cross-country team won county championships as well. Going back to junior high, our junior high girls, we had an individual championship, and our junior high boys had an individual champion and also a team champion. So, the future of Exeter track and field, cross-country, and running is extremely strong. One other person unable to join us tonight is Cody Shadner. He's team captain, qualified for the state cross-country meet, and he's going to Putzdown to further his education and also pursue track and field. Thank you very much.
And our last coach tonight is the coach of our softball team, and our softball team will be playing tomorrow evening at six o'clock at Millersville University for the District Three Championship. We already qualified for the state tournament, which begins Monday, and I didn't even get to tell the coach yet, we automatically have a home game on Monday. So, if we play a team from Pittsburgh, they have to come to us. John Kazner.
What can I say about Haley? She's my leader. Medaled for three years. She would have medaled for four if COVID. In three years played, the fourth year impacted by COVID. Haley helped lead Exeter's softball team in Burks to Burks County, PIAA District Three, and PIAA State Playoffs in nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Helped lead the team in two thousand and twenty-one to the PIAA Quarterfinals and State Playoffs. Helped lead this year's team to the PA two thousand and twenty-two DCIA championship and to the PIAA District, District Three Championship Game tomorrow. Bowing out in three years old. Three-time All-County selection for outfield. I brought her in as shortstop. She made All-County this year. She's the county Player of the Year this year. Batting average nineteen four, two thousand and nineteen four eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-one five eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two six eleven. Three years and eighty-one games played, one-hundred-and-seventy-one hits, six stolen bases, one-hundred-and-thirty runs, and fifty-nine RPM. Continued her, sorry, stroke me out.
She's continuing her academic and athletic career at Bucknell University. Congratulations, Taylor. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Legath. To hear of all of your successes is truly a highlight for the board. So thank you all for coming tonight. When, when you are now welcome to leave, if you would like, you may certainly stay if you would like, but it looks like it's going to be a long meeting. So, but thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Legath and Mrs. Wilson for setting this up. We appreciate it. It's always wonderful hearing great news from Exeter. Next, we have a presentation from Stifel Public Finance. Mr. Fike?
Yes. Sheldon, can you key up the bond presentation? Yeah, you'll key it up. I'd ask both our financial advisor and our bond people to do a short presentation on where we stand on bonds. When we had the audit, the auditor mentioned about bonds dropping off. Bonds are a lot different than bank loans where bonds you can actually wrap debt around. So there was some misconceptions in 2025, 2026, our debt payment drops off. It's actually the bonds drop off the principal and other bonds reduce. Our debt payments pretty level into 2028, then it drops off in 2029 slightly, and then completely off in 2030. But I'll let the experts explain this to you.
Yeah, so we, just to clarify, we are in a rap. We are doing rap right now.
The last, the 2020 issues were a rap to save on interest, but to try to keep the same debts payment they moved. Well, you'll see it in here.
We'll describe it for you.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't know how you even got six and a half. I played baseball in high school, and I couldn't even got two. So, thank you. So I'm a little different. So I'm James, who works in PFM. I've actually served as a financial advisor to the district for probably over a year or two years. I think at this point, you might have saw me in the past through the screen the last couple of years because of COVID, but I was here physically at some point doing some refinancing to debt and other things. So really, you know, for tonight, we're going to really discuss what you have outstanding and do some comparisons to, you know, you as a district, to some of your peers within Berks County. So Mark's going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about just the debt itself and kind of what the way it works, what we've kind of done. I'll try to do that pretty briefly, since I know you have a heavy agenda tonight. My presentation's not up, so if you want, you can just, this presentation is very, very long. I'm really going to talk about two pages of it, the cover and the second page. So the balance of it is really just a backup information for anyone that has any questions on what it looks like.
Sheldon, can you put the, put the presentation I've sent you earlier, not the one from the agenda?
There you go.
There you go.
Just turn to the second page. Okay, so this is just a summary portfolio of the district's outstanding debt. And I know there's some new members of the board here that may not have gone through the debt process, but I'll try to give you a quick 101 pretty quickly. But certainly you can stop me and ask any, ask any questions. So the district over the last, you know, 20, 30 years has been issuing debt for various things. We all know, at Lottin Creek, that was the, you know, the earlier newer elementary school. I've done some Jackson Wall renovations. These go back, you know, probably decades at this point. So what we find with school districts in Pennsylvania, you have these cycles of debt issuance to do various projects. And, you know, we've slowly kind of slowed down the large debt issuance for the, for the school district. And now what you have is a series of various bond and bank loans that make up the portfolio of the school district's debt. Over the course of time, you're going to continue to pay down principal as it comes due. I try to compare things to your home mortgage. It's not exactly the same thing, but it is debt in a sense where you pay a certain principal balance, and you pay interest based on, you know, terms of the actual debt. So depending on the credit worthiness, meaning like your credit score, your credit rating is what we'll talk about tonight, that helps you get lower interest rates. So you'll see in some of the pages that follow this, which I won't go through all the way through, you have some interest rates as low as 1%, which is not much lower you can get at this point. And some are a little bit higher, and that's just structuring of how the bonds work. But the yields of your debt are very, very good, and we've done a really good job the last few years refinancing several of your bonds. I think we saved probably $2, $3 million in the last couple of financings by reducing, you know, the interest expense and interest rate that you paid. There really is nothing to do right now for interest rate reduction because we've done it all, and some of them have what are called call provisions. So the next time you can really touch any of your major debt is in 2023. There's one in 2022. There's no economics of doing that right now, so we're not going to do that. But maybe in the next couple of years, I may come back with Mark and potentially talk about doing some future refinancings. For now, this is just, here's your debt. It's in pretty good shape. It's relatively short overall. And if I'm sitting on the board, you ask, well, how much do I need to pay annually? And what you need to pay annually is on column seven. You should budget approximately about $8 million a year annually. That is your debt before you receive any state reimbursement. So as you may know, the state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has provided reimbursement on many capital projects over the years. So you receive a subsidy on a certain portion of your debt. That is allocated out and shown in a net number called local effort, which is column 14. So although you budget for approximately 8.1 million, it increases a little bit over the course of time because of the refinancings we've done. Overall, you know, it's about $78 million a year until 2028. It drops off in 2029, and you'd be completely debt-free in 2030. And you may say, that's great news. No more debt. More than likely, you know, there'll probably be some capital needs that'll be coming up in the near future. You know, the cycles that we see with schools are usually kind of every 20 years, you start to see, you know, new technologies or new things that you want to do in a building. So that's obviously a board decision, of course, but should there be some new capital needs in the future, you have capacity to issue new debt, and we would use this wraparound debt service structure, which there'll be a page on this on the next spreadsheet. But the concept is very simple, that what you'll do is you'll put the principal payments where the other debt starts to drop off. So you'll see in, as an example, in 2029, we can fit another $5 million of principal in that spot, but we're really not impacting your kind of annual payments by very much because it would be kind of interest only. That's a very common school district structure. It's just the way most school districts work in Pennsylvania. We use rap structures. We work with about half of them in Pennsylvania, and that's, pretty much everyone does raps. So your debt is really short. There's opportunity in the future to issue new debt, to put debt in places without having huge impacts to your overall debt service and for budgetary impacts. So I think you're in a good position. Mark will talk about some of your peers and how you look. I will say, and one of the, toward the back of this is a copy of your rating report through Standard and Poor's for the last issue we did as a public bond issue in 2020. That'll give some information, which you, you should know some of it, and others you'll, you'll learn about how the, one of the rating agencies looks at you from a, from an independent viewpoint. You're a double A credit. The highest you could be is triple A, and that would be two notches above. There aren't many school districts in Pennsylvania that are triple A, so being double A is, is top notch. So I'll stop. The balance of this is really the backup schedules that make up these summary pages. So you have your felt and con to see how your principal's paid back with these, you know, five or so different bond and bank loans. Again, hopefully you'll see me in the near future to potentially refinance debt and save money. But for right now, there's really nothing to do besides keep paying your principal down. I'll let, I'll let Mark take over.
So good evening. As Jamie mentioned, my name is Mark Quinn from Stifel. We're a bond underwriter, which is different than a financial advisor. What Jamie does is he's an independent fiduciary to the school district. What I am is I'm a bond underwriter, so we represent both the buyers of the bonds, the vanguards, the fidelities, the banks, trust departments, and individuals that can purchase the bonds, but we also represent you as a school district. So because we're on both sides of the fence, we're not considered a fiduciary. So what we do a little, is a little bit different than what Jamie does, you know, so I think that's an important clarification as to why we're both here. So this, this first page and what's up on the screen, this matches up with all the numbers that Jamie just presented. So, you know, the gross debt service, the net debt service after reimbursement, those line items, that's just a graphical representation of that column seven and 14 that Jamie had just presented. But down at the bottom, you'll see a couple of points here. The final maturity of all of your debt is May 15th of 2029. At that point, you would be debt-free unless you do some additional borrowings. And I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. But if we can go to the next slide here, I, I think what was interesting for us to put together for, for the school district here was to do a peer comparison of every single school district within the county of Berks, to see how you stack up financially on some of the metrics that the rating agencies take a look at. And I'm, I'm very happy to report that you guys are in great position. So if you take a look at this, you'll see the rating peer comparison, and you'll see that we have you as a double A credit, which puts you in one of four school districts when in, inside the county. So that's Exeter, Mullenburg, Upper Perkyomen, and Wilson carry the highest ratings within the county, which is a double A. You'll see Brandywine Heights through Wyomessin. They're notched somewhat slightly as either a double A3 or a double A minus, which is considered one notch below. And then you have the A category rating, which is Antietam through Topo Hocken. And then you'll see Reading, which is triple B. And you, and you'll note that we, we color coded these, so that also carries through the, to the graphs that we'll be going over. So you'll, you'll note that the rating categories for each school district is color coded for either the, the green, the yellow, or I guess the slight orange-red below. So what you'll see is the first one, total outstanding debt. We, for comparison purposes, we use the data 4-1. So you, you just paid off some debt on 515. So the, the numbers are a little bit lower when you go through this comparison. You know, so we show you as a 4-1 is owing approximately $53 million, and you can see how that stacks up amongst the other school districts. That's actually $48 million now after that 515 payment. The next page where we show the debt per capita, you'll see that the, this is what the debt is per population. So if you took the total debt of, of the school district divided by how many residents that you have, you'll see you're right in the, the middle, slightly lower middle of about $1,900 per person in, in the school district. And these are some of the metrics that the rating agencies take a look at. So you're, you're in very solid shape there. Again, you, you just paid off some debt, so that number's actually a little bit lower now. The, the most interesting statistics that I thought were interesting is if you take a look at that middle graphic, you'll see a peer comparison as a percentage of debt matured in 10 years. And I think this is what Mr. Fike was trying to allude to, is that your debt amortization, you're free and clear very, very soon. And I think that's a testament to the, the financial soundness that the school district has employed with Jamie's help from PFM over the years. So you'll note, all of your debt is paid off in 10 years, so that's shared amongst Exeter, Topo Hocken, Oley Valley, and Fleetwood. So that puts you in the, the upper quadrant of, of Berks County school districts. I'll also note that both PFM and my firm, Stifel, are engaged to do the new high school project for Topo Hocken area school district. So they're swayed to borrow anywhere between 50 and 60 million dollars this summer. So they're going to be dropping out of that quadrant for their large capital campaign. So you'll see Exeter, the following fiscal year, move up dramatically. So these, these are living numbers, but they're just a snapshot in time, and I think you should be mindful of that. Also, the peer comparison at the bottom, that is a percentage of budgeted revenue. You're, you're in the lower quadrant of that. You'll see that the very lowest is Topo Hocken area school district. And as I mentioned, they're going to be moving back up in the pack because they're, they're going to be borrowing a lot of money for their new high school project sometime this summer or early fall. The, the next slide, so I'm, peer comparison as millage. You'll see a couple of numbers here. Exeter is number three for millage, and then also millage is required for annual debt service, which is the second graphic. And then also the annual debt service as a percentage of budgeted revenues or budgeted expenditures. So you'll, you'll see that these, while these are somewhat high within the county, I think you have to look through a couple of things. A, your rating is higher than that of most of the school districts within the county. And then B, also when you've borrowed money, you've borrowed money very short. So what that does is that kind of front loads the amount of millage required for debt service. So that, that's a consideration that you have to weigh against how quickly your debt pays off. Usually when you have a new money borrowing, a lot of school districts will borrow for 20 years or 25 years. So when you've done new deals in, you know, 2020, and I think the one before that was 2017 maybe, I'm sorry, 2019, you, you borrowed money very short, right? So if you think about it, while your payments may go up, you know, for a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, that's what you've done here. So you're also paying less interest over time by keeping that amortization shorter. So that's part of the reason why I think some of those comparisons are a little bit different and seem a little bit higher as compared to the rest of the county, because I think it's a sound financial practice. So what Jamie did and the board did for those years is they borrowed short because actually in the long run, it saves the school district money to do so. So hopefully that, that makes sense to all of you. And you'll see on the, the last slide here, you'll see the peer comparison as a percentage of annual debt service. That's the same type of thing. We took out Reading because, you know, if, if we included Reading, it would have skewed this entire graph, and you, all the other school districts would have looked flat. So we, we put, we, we took out Reading to keep the scale pretty well. And you'll see for the same reasons that we just discussed, that's why you're in that upper quadrant for the, for the, for the county. Also, down at the very bottom, middle page, we, we wanted to explain what the difference is between level debt service and wraparound debt service. The reason why you use wraparound debt service is that it, it, it gives you additional borrowing capacity and lowers your payments versus doing the level debt service. So your, your final payment for the new money bonds, which amortizes in 2029, you'll see kind of like a bullet maturity there. It's common practice for Pennsylvania school districts to do it. Had you not done that, you would have had a spike in your millage above what you already have for your residents if you had done level debt service, where it would have caused a much greater spike for the millage for your residents versus a rap. So that's why that was done both on the 2019 and the 2020 issue. So I know I went through that pretty fast. Both Mr. Sleschinter and myself are available to answer any questions, but we, we thought we would take the time to update the, the school district and, you know, congratulate you for being one of the, one of the four double A school districts in the county. So hopefully this puts your mind at ease that you're, you're on the right track as it relates to your debt financing.
Thanks, gentlemen. I just have one question. What makes, what, what has made for the success of Exeter in terms of its double A rating? Can you kind of give us a description of what we've actually been able to do to kind of maintain that status?
Yeah, so come on up here, and, and you'll, you'll, you'll see the rating report. But, you know, part of it, if you turn to, I think it's page nine of the presentation on Jamie's, you'll see the, the double A rating reflects our opinion of the district's residential taxpayer base, so that's part of it, strong resident wealth and incomes, strong financial management policies and practices, also historically strong financial performance, generating reserves, you know, keeping money as much as the state allows to keep in reserves is a feather in your cap. And then also, the, the second to bottom bullet point there, moderate debt burden, right? So they, they, they don't see you borrowing a whole lot So they, they, they don't see you borrowing a whole lot and your amortization, as we mentioned, is, is, is very short. So these are all contributing factors. Also, it says strong local revenue streams with little reliance on the Commonwealth. So those are some of the things that contribute to your double A rating. Jamie, I, I don't know if you want to jump in here. Standard course hit all the high notes, but that's, that's entirely it. You have a little bit of mix of everything that they kind of want to see. Quick turnaround of payback of debt, you know, consistency of what you've been doing. Management's been strong. Anne and, and, and prior to and, and Brian have done a great job. We can see that there's been good experiences in that front. So you take a little bit of mix of everything and that kind of puts the soup together and then creates a double A. So they do those comparisons to other, you know, municipalities and school districts throughout the Commonwealth. And that's they try to put all together to see what you look like and that's what puts you in the double A category. Any, any other questions? I wouldn't say you're batting six eleven, but you're definitely batting over five hundred. So you got that going for you. Yes, sir.
Just a comment, if I may, I find it, uh, I'm amused at the last criterion, strong local revenue streams with little reliance on the Commonwealth.
Yeah, correct. So, so you know, one of my historical clients has been Philadelphia School District, right? So, um, you know, they, they, they receive half of their money from, uh, you know, basically local taxes from the city of Philadelphia and the other half they receive from the Commonwealth. So a, a number of years ago, there was a budget impasse, uh, if, if you remember that, for the state. That, that really affected, uh, school districts that have a lot of state aid, a lot of revenues coming in from the state, you know, in terms of that subsidy. So the numbers that Jamie presented in terms of the net number, they, they understand that you're not really relying as much on the Commonwealth to make your debt service payments as some other, uh, you know, disadvantaged, uh, school districts economically. So, uh, that, that's the reason for that, that last bullet point. If, if that's a high number, uh, because you're in a low-income area or something like that, that's going to be a, a, a credit factor. And, and you could probably see that with, with Reading School District, which, you know, relies heavily on the Commonwealth for some of their revenues rather than their, their actual tax base.
I just want to thank you gentlemen and also just indicate the Upper Perkeomen School District isn't part of Berks County.
You knew that. We had Boyer Town in there too, which was half in Berks County and half in Montgomery.
As is Twin Valley.
All right. Thank you very much for all that information.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sounds good. Okay. Back to the agenda. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll be going into committees, education. Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First up, we'll have Dan Wilcek with a report on the Exeter Cyber Academy. And I, I must say, I heard the dry run for this, Dan. I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing it all again. It was a great job that day. Was that about five or six weeks ago I thought about it? Good. So take it away.
Thank you. So Sheldon's going to bring up the report. You should have this in your packet. Uh, I'm going to try and break these numbers down to try and explain what happened over the last few years, uh, starting with the pandemic. So if you look back, this time last year, we had almost twelve hundred students that were actually still full virtual. There are a lot of ebb and flows with these numbers because things have changed a lot. At that time, those twelve hundred students were actually being worked with with our Exeter teachers. So those are our Exeter teachers who were still home. So it seems like a turn ago that we were full lockdown and students were still home, but it was only a year ago that twelve hundred students were still virtual. Going into this year, uh, when I met with our administration, there was a big concern of how do we get those twelve hundred students back? And that's when I kind of came in and kind of tried to organize all this. We found that we had so many evolutions of these virtual programs, different, uh, different programs. And that's kind of at the bottom in the blue, those four programs, the cyber-supported, the virtual academy, BBA, Laura Life. We had all these programs kind of all under different entities in the district, from special ed to assistant superintendent to people services, and they weren't organized as a whole. They were kind of mismatched and, and budgeted in different areas. And that's where I think, uh, I'm going to shift kind of where the budget comes together. We're really not spending that much more. It's just that they were making stuff all over the place to try to pick up all these things. So last year, um, we went into, or this year, I'm sorry, we went into looking at how do we get those students back in with us? So we put a, a lot of effort into recovering the students into our programs in person. We had a lot of students that left us and went to also a third-party cyber charters, which are at a total cost. For this year, it's, uh, I think it's thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars for special ed and twelve-six for a regular student to leave us and go to a third-party cyber charter, incredibly expensive. We picked up and kind of looked at some programs that we contracted with Pearson. Pearson being that huge company that has a conglomerate of a lot of educational services. They've been providing a, a program in a cyber charter called Pearson Connects Us. So it's a proven, uh, program that's been out there, the curriculum's been out there for a while. We wanted something that was proven, uh, that we're, that could grow with us or flex with us. The concern was that we knew there was going to be issues with teacher shortages or potentially, how do we, you know, how do we get as many kids back, but also not put that, uh, weight on the teachers? Because prior years, we had teachers teaching in person and also teaching virtually at the same time, which was a huge, it was, it was a struggle. So we wanted to really try to streamline that, get as many people back in and also kind of support our teachers. So that's why we contracted with Pearson. There are contract costs for them of forty-two fifty. So if you look at that compared, uh, to a third-party cyber charter, it's a significant savings, which is in here somewhere. So what we did this year is we contracted with that. We ended up with about a hundred and sixty students, uh, that remained in charter with us or, or cyber with us. We also dropped our hundred and five daily average for third-party cyber, uh, which we were paying those thirty-three and twelve down to eighty-seven. So that, there's a lot of numbers in here. So we, we basically recouped a lot of those. So that cyber charter cost dropped from one nine seven, a million nine seven to a million seven. So there's a little bit of savings there. I am going to continue to try and get that number down. We've been really fighting to get those students back. I actually had a call Friday with a family that went out during the pandemic, has been out for the last two years and is coming back next year. So we're working on that. So we, uh, you know, Ms. Harrison and I spent a great deal of time, uh, we sent certified letters to all those families, called them to the point that they're like, Ms. Polchek, I got it, I'm staying or stop calling me or, you know, I appreciate you calling me. So we're going to keep sending those letters and keep really talking to those families to try, you know, pump up our programs. I think we have a, a very competitive program, uh, that can compete fully with those cyber charters. We have great results. At the end of this year, we tested a lot of our students for reading levels and they're, they're doing great. So really happy with working with Pearson. So for this year, uh, our running average was, if you look at this, a hundred and fifty-two students. But if you look, we actually ended up working with over two hundred and thirty-five students. And that difference is how many students we actually returned back to in person. It was this ebb and flow. But going into this year, we had a lot of families that were like, all right, I'm just going to go until like November, December, going to go back second quarter, maybe third quarter. And then Omnicrom hit in November, December, and that just blew everybody up. We actually had more people come out in November, December than actually went back in. So there was a, a kind of an ebb and flow. The good part of that is that we're retaining them. We're not losing them permanently and our numbers for next year are right about seventy-five. So that number, year over year, I'm going to keep trying to get that number down and those costs should come down along with that. So we're going to keep, you know, pushing that and just keep driving those numbers down as much as we can, um, getting our students back. So if you look, um, at the bottom, this was our overall numbers. You can see that the, uh, the chart above that, those blue programs, which are cyber-supported, which is a program at the high school. And I'm not sure how much, uh, this has been explained. We were programmed at the high school where we had students that are, uh, potentially special ed, returning from placements, students that have anxieties, um, can't be at school for other things, um, multitude of things. We have them with our teachers, but actually in a cyber curriculum. So they don't actually go in the classroom, they're actually in a single classroom throughout the day. And we kind of use that as a flex program to return. When we did that, we also lowered our cost, uh, and our kind of struggles for kids that were in placement. So we pulled some of those kids that were stuck in placement that didn't want to come back to our school. And we're kind of having a step-down transition program. So it lowers costs in other areas as well. So there's kind of that blend. When we did all that, we brought all those under the Exeter Cyber Academy and bought one curriculum at Pearson instead of having BLN, Edgenuity, Pearson, BBA, Laura Life. We had all these different programs in the bottom. So if you look at our numbers, we ended up working with a hundred and fifty kids for about a hundred thousand dollars more compared to the prior years we worked with, uh, like forty kids, forty-five or fifty kids. So like, if you look at those ratios, we really got that cost down and F hundred, really efficiencies. So we're going to just keep driving that cost down. My hope is to, um, you know, get back to our twenty-twenty-one level, which is about four-ten, and just keep driving that cost down. So hopefully it took, well, frankly, it's going to take about a year or two to get out of that pandemic. I still have families, uh, when I did the survey, uh, over the last four weeks, I was surprised how many families are actually still out because of COVID. It surprised me. I actually called, uh, we did a Google survey and then when I got the results, I started calling people one-on-one and saying, hey, what's, you know, what's going on? What can we do to help you come back? A lot of those families, we ended up transitioning to hybrid. So I, I'm going to have more hybrid next year than ever. And what that is, is a student taking two or three classes in person and potentially two or three classes at home. We're trying to get them to come back, feel comfortable. I've not had a kid that has gone to hybrid go back the other way. They always go hybrid and they go full. I don't have kids going hybrid and then going back to cyber. So that's really positive news. So that's kind of what, we're trying to transition people back, recognize that we're safe here, uh, if they feel comfortable back in. Some of that is just anxiety. There's been a lot of, um, and we know mental health is, uh, it's up, uh, worst I've ever seen. I've been in education for twenty-five years, hands down. Kids that are, um, just definitely afraid to come to school. And I have a lot of those. So a lot of that's our program is also that. So that's something that we're just trying to do, these transition programs where we're coming in for a period of two, uh, core curriculum, English math. Or if we test them with our star program at elementary and we see that they have a deficiency coming in for those services, special ed services, we're really trying to continue to drive that program down. So that's kind of our overall cost. I want to keep getting that, um, my hope is to get that cyber cost, third-party cyber cost back down to that eighty that we had two years ago and keep driving that down as much as we can.
Questions?
Thank you, Dan. Questions?
I have several. Just because I'm curious. When you send out your surveys, are, are you also sending surveys out to the children that are currently or the families that are currently in cyber out of district? And finding out what the reasoning is, why they're staying out of district, how we can bring them back in? And, and I'm just going to give you, you my follow-up question to that now also. And that is that the people that you've brought in from an outside charter school into the Exeter charter school, have we done a follow-up survey with them as to what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? And, you know, how do we improve that to keep you here and, and get other families that are out of district, in the district?
First question, so how we, you know, we do survey them separately because there are, so the survey that we just sent out was, what's your plan for next year? So that was kind of geared towards only extra students. And then the other letter, so that was sent out was actually a letter, um, just explaining our program or then a survey to the third-party cyber charters. So it's not a survey of why you're doing it, but it's a question of this is what we have, uh, looking at the results of all these state schools and looking at all the cyber programs and also putting the costs. When people leave us, you know, the taxpayers, they're leaving us and they're special ed students. You know, it's thirty-three thousand dollars is coming out of our taxes. So we try to, you know, send that to Leonard and say, okay, how, how do we, do you want to come back? Or do you want me to call you, have you set up a meeting and talk about what we can offer you better? The thing that we're finding that we do better than anybody else is human element, right? You're going to these cyber programs that are, could be in Pittsburgh, could be anywhere, and there's no human element. They don't have sports. And some kids can participate in our sports, but they're disconnected from the school. The people that we recovered have basically been, like, call them, they get to know me, uh, it's that human element. And, you know, we go out to the house if we have to, uh, we provide computer threat to, you know, services here. We push clubs, we push sports, we push athletics, you know, anything that we can do to make them part of our community. And that's what I push with our, uh, third-party servers, that we want to be part of our Exeter family. That's really it. There's nothing particular. There are some families I can tell you look like, and further when I talked about this when we met, uh, they're just not coming back. There's no way. They, they just, you know, they're adamant about it, um, from a multitude of reasons. Some are very adamant that their religious beliefs are still a cultural worship. So there, there's certain families that I don't know that will ever get back. But a bulk of it I find is that once they leave, they're comfortable. So that's the one thing that, why we brought in Pearson, is they have the best K to four program that no one else had. Edgenuity, uh, we ship them out to BBA. And BBA was a program through Chester County, uh, where they would work the kids. But no one really had that much program except Pearson. Pearson has one, that's not much program. Once we lose those kids, they never come back because they get comfortable, families are comfortable with them. It's kind of, you know, you just, you buy it, you do the same thing every year. So that's our goal is to try and catch them before they leave. So when we lose them, it's thirteen years, so it's happening. So we're really just trying to push them. But there's, I don't, it's interesting because I've always been trying to find a way, like, why are you signed? Why do you charter? And there's no one beautiful defining definition of why. It's like, it seems like it was, I mean, even the kids that I have, the gamut runs pretty broad, um, from athletes to actors to, um, anxieties to, uh, health issues at home. It's pretty broad. Does that answer your question?
It does. Quick follow-up to that is, you know, we know that every time you keep a family in the district, it saves us money. Every time you bring a family back into the district, it saves us money, which is great. And it's great for the, for those families as well. Is there an enrollment number that's too low that we lose that break-even point for cyber? Correct?
No, we pay for costs for, for our program. We put a two fifty now, because I mean, ultimately, I played with that number this year, so I can, those are hot seats. When I pay forty-two fifty, I can reuse those seats. And one of the things I did, and it fit me a little bit, I bought half your seats, which are about three dollars or more. Because I assume what people would go, ah. But ultimately, if you look at my numbers, we started at one fifty, rented one forty-six, one, like, here within five or six. Really the cost, not really a cost inside my time, right? But ultimately, it's forty-two fifty. So they go in, it's forty-two fifty, you know, if they leave us for a year, uh, we reuse that seat, we can use it, but ultimately, it's forty-two fifty if they don't use it. So it's a flat cost. Some of that is Pearson has to staff, things that we need, we have, they have staff needs. So that, that's why they sell those hot seats that we can reuse because they want to, uh, pay their staff. So there's not much people that go and so it's kind of a balance. But if we drive that down, I would love to drive that down next time. I don't know that it's ever going to happen, unfortunately. I would like to see it under fifty. I think that's a realistic number. I also say that some of the stuff that we're doing is also not just, um, just cyber. It's also expansion of our catalog. So we have conference study, maybe that's in the vocational program, for nursing. And she couldn't get some of her AP classes in, in like her schedule of work. We had to give her a cyber class. So some of that's built in. On credit recovery, we're doing it a year after the year now, instead of waiting until the June of the year. Like, uh, these credit recovery, we do it right away. There's a drive-by for graduation, so it's always okay. So I can, I can categorically say that some of the cyber stuff that we're doing is the reason for some of the improvements of our graduation rates as well.
Last question, I promise. Can, can you walk us through the day in the life of a primary student in, in the Exeter Cyber Academy? So what the, what, you know, we know a student gets up, gets on the bus, that doesn't happen for, so what, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, so it's very similar. And we actually have examples on our, so if you go to our website now too, uh, under the school buildings, Exeter Cyber Academy. And they're working down the curriculum of each park, uh, K elementary, uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. And inside there, there's actually a description document that do exactly that, that's all what I was going to say. So a standard day for a student is a standard curriculum. So English, math, science, social studies, uh, PE, art, music, same curriculum that an elementary student would have anywhere else. They log in. So our K two-two programs have daily meetings, morning meetings with their teacher. So it's a little bit different. That's something we believe is about Pearson. We wanted, uh, direct teacher connections. Every student in elementary has one teacher, so K two, five, uh, even though five, six, it's a different, Bushell Elementary structures, K five, has one teacher for all those course subjects, math, science, social, funding arts, and then separate related arts teachers just like they would in school. So a standard day is getting up. We require that they log in, uh, at the same time as Exeter students. So we try to match our day and they take attendance. So they go in, like, fifty are elementary students logged in, mark their attendance and then get on, uh, with their teacher for the morning meetings throughout the day. And then each day they have a additional virtual live meeting based on their course subjects. After that, they go into the program, the program's designed, uh, but they can choose which subject they want to teach. Beginning of year, we built a schedule with them so that we have a very strict, proper schedule. Where they go in and they work on their content, how their due dates, that's a lot of the system that shows in the due dates. So basically they go in, they watch the videos or read their content and, and basically complete their assignments. Generally about forty-five minutes per core content, um, up to, uh, fifty. Uh up to uh fifty, you know, sometimes depending on how I think it will be. Uh so basically, it's a very typical day where they start at eight, you know, eight fifty at elementary. They go in for about three hours, do the work, have lunch for an hour. Um because it's digital, I built in lunch, uh or tried to build in lunch. Our family changes, they they can choose how to flex this, but I asked them to set an hour lunch. So I really thought it was important, the kids get off screen and go outside a little bit. So we we tried to build that out as much or less screen time as possible than the afternoon, the exact same thing. So they could do, you know, maybe language arts, science, uh art, and then afternoon E L A, social studies, uh P E. Kind of that structure throughout the day, forty five minutes long. Thank you very much. You know, that's pretty similar to K to twelve across the board. So it's a pretty consistent program. Uh we did go with Pearson, uh also because we wanted one program, K to twelve, so students do stay with us, just continual. Um so once they get in, they're comfortable, parents have all access, just look on the reports, uh parents go in and see that. But it's a lot. Um K to four, it's a lot on parents, I'll say that. Uh and we we did see, we don't have a lot of numbers in elementary next year. A lot of numbers that should work largely because of coronavirus. Next year, we're gonna see those numbers hopefully under ten in K four, K five. And and that's, I I hope we drive that in.
Can I can I just make a comment? Doing some math in my head quickly regarding your break even point. So doing math in my head quickly. Um we would still be, the district would still be able to financially support a full time person in charge of the cyber, our cyber academy with only twelve to fifteen regular ed students. And so when you start getting down to those numbers though, now we wouldn't be talking about a full time person at that point in time. But so again, that's just quickly numbers in my head. So twelve to fifteen regular ed, not special education students. Difference between outside cyber and and another uh comment I just want to make, and Dan and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong about this. The thirty three thousand dollar for outside cyber for a special education student is any student with an I E P for any reason, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's brutal. So if you have a, uh you see a speech teacher once a week, once every two weeks, once a month, thirty three thousand dollars compared to twelve. So we have it's an issue. And the state knows it and they've been trying to change it.
And that's, and I just wanted to mention because there's a lot of talk about cyber charter reform, and I just wanted to mention that's that.
And we haven't had, um we've had cyber kids for eight years now. I don't think we've ever been under fifty, ever. Like it's been, it's been a longstanding number, that that number's probably gonna, I I would say it'd be lower than fifty.
I applaud you guys for for getting out there and Miss Harris and your department for continuing to do the surveys and call families because I think that a lot of times we don't know what we don't know. So you know, you you know, picking up the phone, if you have somebody that's telling you to stop calling, that means that you're probably doing your job, right? So we we cer- we certainly appreciate that because I just think that a lot of times people just don't know what it is that we offer, how good our program is. So if we're out there promoting it, that's a good way to to increase it. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I've I've seen stuff on Facebook and I I think it shows me that we're doing a good job. We have families that are in cyber. Supporting as well, saying, hey, this is what they're doing, you know, check out this if you're going out to third party, check out this, you know, check out what Exeter's doing. Yeah, we'll be doing um uh open houses in August for cyber. Uh so the families that are leaving us or uh we have an open house with Pearson, they actually do a presentation. So if families are interested, uh we kind of show them. But our hope is that we have as many people in person as possible.
I have a quick question.
Other question?
Me. Sorry, I just want to check. So when you mentioned um some of the or the high school kids who had to, you know, wanted to take a class outside or there, what is the cost for that?
Uh those are not on here. It's seven fifty is what it's at the end.
Oh, okay.
For a single course. And A P, A P courses are all the way expensive.
Right.
Uh so it's seven fifty. We have, uh I want to say six currently or seven for next year. Um it's a conflict, you know, there's only like one A P bio, right?
Right.
So like, if you have anything that overlaps that, you're in Go Tech, in A M or P M, that A P bio falls, you don't get it. So that that's kind of that balance. So we have a couple of core things. There's a couple, there are three or four things of why we do that. The other one is a continuum. So if you're taking a foreign language and you need to get to a higher level foreign language for three or four years of foreign language and you can't get that in with your schedule, that's that's the two things that you see. And that's actually in the sort of eagle. You'll actually see that. It's been in the sort of eagle uh for almost thirteen years. We did A P foreign languages for years.
And they, yeah, I actually, not here, but I I feel like, um and do they have, because I I realize teachers teach a specific time or they record the lesson, and you can watch it afterwards. So the A P courses, do they they ever see them in first, like their lessons? Yeah.
Yeah, they do for for Pearson, I'd say. They do. It's on, A P is very structured based on A P.
Okay.
Um and there's different, there's actually different guidelines by, based on the board, there's sort of on courses. So there is a little more.
Hence the more cost, the the higher cost and stuff. So so the, so the student does see their teacher, like, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So there's more of that, but it's it's still virtual.
Right, right. No, I understand.
But it is, it is a little bit more intensive. Uh it's challenging.
I'm like, yeah, yeah, it is.
And our T, you know, our students want to take those in person, but it is kind of that balance. You know, there's a couple, uh the one class that we uh Latin too, Latin's always been struggling. We don't have a lot of, you know, there's one section that's Latin. And we have people that go into the medical field that want to even add classes. Um so that's a challenge and it's, you know, that's that's another class that we struggle with.
I just want to make a comment. Uh start of pandemic through the first year, most schools lost or increased their uh cyber charter by forty percent. That's what we did. Um one of the things they they found that was interesting, the high wood went higher, but the cyber schools kind of get confused or shut down. And so they actually turned away, requested to join their services.
Yeah, there was a lot of that. Pearson had a lot of struggles with that. So we got in early, the good contract, been pretty happy with that. Um and they've they've had the struggles as we have with staff. You know, there there was some uh you know, staff issue where they were losing a teacher in the year, same kind of thing. Um but they they've done a good job with that. I think that's where I like their partner with that forty two fifty, even though I don't like paying for someone that's leaving us. It fixes their cost a little bit so they don't, you know, they give us those seats, we own those seats, so there's no question about it. Um so we have it every year. We have, we have to sign that contract. We haven't done that yet. We're waiting uh to make sure we're happy with them and they can finish well. So it looks like that, that's what we'll do again for next year.
Looking at our website, um it it mentioned that that there'll be um teacher time and circle time and homeroom. Is that all through Pearson?
That is.
That, okay.
Everything is through Pearson. Yeah, none of it is with our subteachers because we couldn't load balance that.
Okay.
Because of numbers. So like I have three kindergartners, four first graders, and you know, five second graders. So like, how did we, how do you get one teacher to do all that? We talked a lot about like, do we take one teacher that teaches K one, two, three, and four? Uh but the concern was that, was really that we didn't expect Amatron to hit. So we expected a lot of those elementary kids to go back. So we thought we would start with, you know, twenty elementary kids. And by the year we'd have ten, now that teacher would only have ten kids. So that's why we want that Pearson, but it is all with the Pearson teachers.
Okay, but we we approved those virtual tutors. Is that a part of your program at all?
That is. So that's, those are, so what we did this year is we hired Pearson teachers. It's a weird structure, but it's a hundred dollars per student. You have Pearson tutors. Um for every student. It was like an all or nothing thing. So I'm gonna get rid of that for next year. Bring our tutors in and I'm gonna find that it's gonna be cheaper to do that based on one cost. What I found was, I I thought that students would use this more because I wanted uh one of the things we did going into virtual, uh we wanted students to have instant access to a human anytime. So you're working on a math problem, you're stuck, email your teacher. And she's not available, he's not available for two hours. You need that. So we bought Pearson tutoring, uh which is a a kiosk where the kids jump in and they have a tutor within five minutes. Um that uptake of usage was minimal, it was less than five percent. So I spent a hundred dollars on all those hundred students, fifteen thousand dollars. You know, it just, it didn't make sense. So like, we're gonna take that, lower that cost, and then use our teachers to really gauge, um to gain, um really, uh to get to know each other. I think that was what I found when I started, a lot of students weren't using the Pearson teachers. It's such a strange. Like they weren't comfortable meeting with a random person. Um well, I now bought those four, three or four teachers in. They get to know them, they get to know their families, and now they have that connection. It's all about that human connection. So that that's kind of the law for that.
Okay, thank you.
That cost should be a lot, because it's sort of a last of what I think for Pearson.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, it's amazing. Yeah, I'm thinking back to the first month you break this. And seven sticks in my mind is the number of students we had.
Yeah.
When we add, when we added up the difference between the uh outside cyber schools and what we were, our cost, we were delighted because we were making so much money.
Correct.
Run quite a distance.
That's a lot, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think the pandemic drove a lot, a lot of families. Um better for worse, got a little too comfortable at home. And that's what we're, you know, we're slow, we're pulling them back. It's, it's, we're gonna get there. We'll get this number down. It's just gonna take another year or two. Uh but I, you know, there's a lot of families that I was surprised, still surprised how many families also, on the flip side of that, learn that their students are learning. There are certain students that learn well from this. Um and every student learns different. So there is that balance of you know, how do we, how do we support our families, uh and not lose them, and try to keep our cost.
Anybody else? Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss O'Leary. Um I do have a question for Dr. M. You said that there's been a lot of talk about cyber charter reform.
Yes.
Can can you or anyone else say, has there been any action? I know there's been a lot of talk.
Dave, I don't know if you can weigh in on that either. Uh yeah, so it was in, it was in House Committee. I forget, it was in one of the committees. It got passed through, but it did make it through another committee. I forget which one.
Yeah, there've been lots of proposals over the years. And in fact, John, uh the governor's budget included a pack, part of the package was um modifying the funding formula for cyber charter uh to limit or to cap the amount and make consistent across the Commonwealth. Because right now, every school district pays a different amount as their basic tuition, you know, for uh cyber charter and charters. And the same thing with special education. They, the governor will propose a th- a three tiered special education system where the more intensive the need, uh the 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 more, the higher level of services the student needs, the more the tuition would be, it would be higher. And then for those students who maybe have an I E P for, you know, thirty minutes of speech a week, um that would be, that would be the lowest tier of the three tiered special ed system. These things have fallen flat in the legislature. And part of the problem appears to be that, um you know, the lobby, you know, the the charter school lobby is so strong in Harrisburg and that so many of of, you know, those uh in power, you know, are able to to benefit from this very strong lobbying relationship. Um so it's it's frustrating. We're not gonna get anywhere, I think, with this until we actually can uh see a change in the legislature. And this has been going on for years. I think twenty years now, I think they've been trying to enact some meaningful charter school funding reform. It's just not happening.
But I mean, Republicans are in charge of the legislature, right?
That's true.
So until that changes.
Yeah, I mean, and and there's some, um I mean, yeah, I mean, it just, it has not, it's not gonna get anywhere.
I mean, that's the six, that's the six hundred pound gorilla.
It is, it is, yeah. Not to, not to make it political, but uh that that's the reality.
Tip of the iceberg, all politics is.
Until that changes, until until the balance of control and power changes in Harrisburg, then I I don't see the change here.
Well, in this case, all politics is politics. And even school boards have become political.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Dr. Hamburger, I I do have a question along those lines, um in terms of charter school reform. I know many many years ago, um there was an issue with charter schools using the funds to uh for marketing campaigns, you know, putting up billboards and such. And I'm assuming that hasn't changed at all either. Like we, we, you know, as a local school district, we're limited to what we can actually do with those funds and how we can market. And um, you know, that competition that we face, that that's another issue with charter schools is that you know, they they can unleash, you know, a pretty hefty marketing campaign. I know years ago, I went to a Reading Royals game and they were handing out you know, uh plush toys with the with the cyber charter school name on it. Um and it's just, it it it's a very tough market to to to, I I haven't heard any changes.
Right. And there's a, there's a profit structure there too. I mean, this is, this is tax dollars. This is our tax money that's going to uh supplement the in- incomes of some of these very wealthy uh C E Os of these charter school companies. So it it's, uh I think it's just embarrassing that Pennsylvania hasn't made any, any significant changes in this area. And it's obvious, I think, to most people that there's a, um that there's misuse of public uh of money here, but it it's just not, it's not resonating where it needs to resonate. That's, to me, the problem. We've got, I mean, uh P S B A and some of its allies have really worked really hard in lobbying. Every year, we do advocacy work in Harrisburg. And one of the prime uh, one of the prime issues that we we talk about is is cyber charter funding reform. And we we sit down with our our legislators and we we kind of review all this. And uh most of the time, you know, we talk to the people who were preaching to the choir, you know, uh Judy Schrank to the world or or Mark Rousey, they'll actually entertain our visit. The others not so, you know, friendly to us coming into Harrisburg. Uh it's, it's really tough. And um nothing's, as I said before, I mean, nothing has changed for years. You're right, the same system of uh of uh promoting uh charter schools through the advertising, airwaves, network side, uh social media, s- strong as ever.
And some of those charter schools haven't even been audited by the state yet. The ones that have been, it's been eight years old, or public schools every four years. And if you try to get a right to know from the charter, you know, how much they spend for advertising, they say it's a proprietary information.
All right, thank you. Um next on the agenda is uh textbook approvals. Uh Dr. Flamm, could I call on you for that?
Sure, Mr. Viller. We have four textbooks up for uh approval. Two social studies and two E L A textbooks uh from three publishers. The social studies textbooks are both related to A P. The new A P Human Geography course for ninth grade students uh is the uh B F W textbook, one hundred and twenty student editions. The uh Sengage book is for the uh A P U S history course. Uh that book was aging and this book aligns uh better to the A P test. The E L A textbooks were very old. The E L A teachers have been uh begging for new textbooks for some time. I think we put them off for at least two years. Um and so uh three times the charm, uh they're hoping. And uh so uh the uh both of the E L A textbooks are Savas textbooks. It's a six year license with six years of consumables. The uh, I'll just speak a little bit about the shipping costs. Uh the initial shipping costs were much higher than what you see on the agenda. Uh when I spoke with uh Matt Borich at Sengage, uh Matt uh was able to get this cost down to six point five percent. When I uh introduced the idea of third party shipping and spoke with Matt about that, he told me that there would be a five percent handling charge from Sengage uh regardless of uh whether we went with a third party shipper. So um I'm in uh communication with third party shipping to discuss that. But regardless, there would be a five percent handling charge from Sengage. When I spoke with uh Jason Kramer from Bedford Freeman and Worth, uh their initial quote was much higher as well. It's about twelve hundred dollars. And the the figure that you see on the agenda is actually much higher than what I received most recently from Jason. Uh in fact, his email, his latest email to me was, I'm copying my warehouse team to provide a much closer estimate of what the actual shipping cost will be for the order. And shipping address reflected on the attached quotes, stay tuned. And then he followed with an email that said the estimated ground shipping cost for the attached quote is three hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty three and twenty seven cents. So that eight oh four ninety six is now three twenty three uh based on his latest communication with me. Again, that will be ongoing communication with the third party shipper to super, you know, a reduction there as well. The Savas uh shipping costs uh are interesting because that's a six year uh consumable shipping quote. It's a one time fee that covers all six years. And so that figure of twenty seven eighty four represents six percent of the uh total cost. Uh again, I introduced the concept of third party shipping. Kelly Cunningham from uh Savas told me that they would charge a two percent handling fee uh regardless of third party shipping. uh, regardless of third-party shipping, uh, so I'll engage in conversation with the third-party shipper, but the, you know, the, the holdup may be that it's over a period of six years, so a third-party shipper will need to come in under four percent over the course of six years to, to realize the cost savings. So I'm in communication with, uh, the publishers and third-party shipping to see if we can reduce these costs any further than what they are now. If we can realize, uh, any further savings, it will appear on, uh, the agenda for the vote.
You're welcome to use my, uh, Amazon Prime membership. That will help.
Thank you, John, if you could send your username and password to me, I'd appreciate it.
And, and thanks for your hard work, not only in producing the books, but on getting better shipping costs, appreciate it.
Dr. Flamm?
Doctor, no.
Number one, are they, is this the only company that we can work with? It seems to me that, so they're, they're essentially saying that they'll ship them for one point five percent, but they, it's gonna cost us five percent to handle them. When you look at the other companies we're working with, it seems like they're trying to play hardball with us, whereas everybody else is willing to work with us, at least to, to some level or another. Uh, I mean, can we essentially say, we'll get our textbooks somewhere else?
Well, I, I think we could, the, the question is, the teachers, you know, look at the textbook, they, you know, they, they think this is the best textbook for our students, uh, to prepare them for the AP test.
They don't need to know that.
So we couldn't get the same textbook from, right, we could get a different one.
Correct, you know, they, I mean, the, the publisher doesn't need to know the reason, they, you know, unless they watch the video, board meeting, I guess.
Does Sengage, do they offer any type of online booking services? I mean, I use them a lot for my coursework, um, and key codes online, so it was all virtual.
These, these include it.
Okay.
But over six years, does that mean because they're shipping us the workbooks every year, is that what you mean? But we couldn't, so we couldn't do the digital ones?
It, it comes with it, yeah, it comes along with it.
Doctor, maybe adding on to, to what Dr. Battler's saying is, we'll, 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 we'll see comments where people say, hey, it's twenty twenty-two, why are we still dealing with physical textbooks to begin with, why can't we just do all digital? What, what would you say to, to someone that's suggesting?
Well, this allows, uh, the student, uh, to write in the textbook, it allows it to be more engaging with the student. There's certainly an option for online supplements, but, uh, the primary reason is, you know, the textbook in front of you.
Thank you.
So I actually went over most of these, um, and the, so for example, um, my perspective of American literature. When I looked at the, when I looked at the textbook and then supplement, you know, it goes along with the textbook, you're not writing in the textbook, you're just writing in the, in the supplement. It's, I didn't see the, it was almost like a college, I mean, it is, like a college textbook, and then the college workbook that almost nobody writes in. So, i- in my personal opinion, um, so I guess, do you have to get them? Do you have to get the supplements, like, do you have to get the workbooks, or do you not?
That's a good question, I don't know if we have to get them.
Sorry. Okay, I was just wondering, because it, it, there was a lot that was, um, I don't know, it was just kind of a repeat of what was actually in the book. So I was wondering if we did, and I, I just thought about it, so I apologize, Dr. Flamm, for putting you on the spot there. Um, also, because these are only good for six years, I mean, these are pretty hefty prices for, uh, you know, books. Yeah, textbook, I know, and I, and I agree, that's why I'm trying to, like, I would love to get them, give them exactly what they want, but if, I mean, they have Chromebooks, and they can set up a whole account, this is just my human geography for AP, and, you know, go to town, um, or what have you, but they're only good for six years, so every six years, they're offered places anyway, is that the correct answer? Okay, and do they have any of these already, or is this just a brand-new class? Okay, thanks, sorry.
Anybody else?
Uh, I, I do have a question about the, the AP, um, Human Geography, so is that all of our ninth-grade students are beginning, going to be taking AP Human Geography, not all?
Yeah, it's about, uh, roughly a third.
I still think we should go after number one, just to put that out there, I, I think it's a, they're, they're, they're not willing to, to play around, around this five percent, uh, and, I mean, if, if we're just looking at every other company that's willing to do the work, and these guys clearly are not, you know, we, it may be that we, there's nothing we can do, and we certainly respect the, you know, what, what our, what our educators want, the best textbooks, you know, I want that for our students too, I'm not saying that we, we shouldn't go away from it, but I do think we should continue to push them and see if we can get a better number from them, because they're not even in the ballpark of the other three companies, which says to me that, you know, they need to be pushed harder.
And, um, just to add to that, we did have a community member, um, that had reached out, uh, as children in the district in Works and Logistics. Uh, Leonard Burton, he did offer to assist, uh, with anything the district did need.
Anybody else? I, uh, also looked at the books, and I just wanted to say that they are good books, uh, particularly the American Lit book is very close to the book I used at RAC for an early American literature course. Great stuff, rich content and, uh, diverse content, a lot of variety. Oladah Equiano, who was, uh, one of the, one of the first African-American writers, eighteenth century, whose narrative of his experience as a slave being brought from Africa is, is both moving and, um, a rich part of our history, whether we like it or not. And that's the kind of content that's here, now, is that available in other books? I don't know, I'll leave that to, to the experts, but, uh, I just found the books, uh, to be very exciting, and if, if we decide to go with these books, they will be good books, and our, our kids should have a lot of fun with them, so, thanks again for your report, Dr. Flamm. All right, um, we'll move now to field trips, I won't read this information, you, I know you all can, can read. I will add to item D, these two, um, trips beyond the sixty-mile radius. Pleased to report, and you'll see this in the, uh, in the detail, uh, that, uh, these will not cost the district anything. The students will be paying the cost for these two trips, the cheerleading nationals and the French exchange trips, and that's, that's good news for, uh, our friends and neighbors who support our school, schools. Same with con- conference requests, um, we will be moving this to the voting meeting in June, there are seven there, and they are all, uh, available for your, um, for your inspection. Um, starting with item F, I'm gonna turn to, um, Mrs. Harris, if I may, and wondering if you could just give us a sentence or two, or, or three, no more than three, twenty-five words or less, as the saying goes, uh, on each one of these, and of course, if anybody has questions, please, uh, feel free to ask.
Mr. Fiddler, if, Mr. Fiddler, before we move on to that, I just had a question about the, the, um, conference request.
Yes.
Um, because we, we just talked about the AP, um, in ninth grade, so are the two attendees going to, um, Goucher College, is that, are they ninth-grade human geography teachers at the high school?
That's correct.
And then the, um, the ones, the teachers that are going to the college board training, they're junior high teachers, is that in preparation for the following year?
Yes, what we're trying to do is, is, is build a robust system to help prepare students to go to the high school with the, the requisite knowledge and skills to be, not only to take the AP courses, but to be very successful in them. So, uh, one of the things that AP offers is a webinar, uh, for schools that don't run an official pre-AP program, but, uh, it's a, it's an effort to train teachers, teach them, kind of, what to anticipate as students move forward, so that they can look at our curriculum and start to build some of those things in, so that's what this is. Uh, we, we're, uh, looking to gain, uh, information from their experience this summer, and if it's a very good one, then we'll certainly look to, uh, move forward with that, uh, across the board, but we thought with the new, uh, ninth-grade AP Human Geography course, it would be good for our seventh and eighth-grade teachers to get this training and preparation.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, good question. Um, all right, so, Mrs. Harris, starting with, um, letter F, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler, uh, I'll just speak, yeah, in general about F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N, all at one time. Um, so there are some ESY tuition agreements on there, um, these are, as you might recall, agreements for students who are in out-of-district placements who qualify for extended school year services. Those of you that are new to the board, you'll always see a couple of those around this time of the school year, this is when we approve those services for those students. Um, you'll also see on here some improvements for agreements to costs for services, such as the River Rock Agreement and the Aviana Healthcare Agreement, so those are agreements for costs for services, should we require those services from those agencies. River Rock is, um, a placement service that we use, it's an out-of-district placement for students who, uh, require that level of need. And then the Aviana Healthcare Agreement is an agreement of costs for services for our substitute nurses when we need them. Um, you'll also see agreements on here such as the CSF Buxman Agreement, which actually, um, is an agreement for, um, slots at CSF Buxman. That's another out-of-district placement that we use quite frequently for students who have a high level of need, particularly related to behavioral and social and emotional supports. And the Lakeside Agreement is the agreement, they use a fancy word, they call it neurologic counselors, we call them social workers. Um, so that's your agreement for the social workers that we have staffed in the district. Just to remind you where that money and those funds come from, some of that comes from the monies that were previously allocated for the Rural Life Program, and then, I think it's, uh, Mr. Feike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's seventy-eight thousand of that is from the ESSER funding, that's the ESSER-funded social worker, am I in the ballpark with seventy-eight thousand? Thank you. Um, so that is that agreement, um, Lakeside is, uh, an amazing, uh, organization that we've, uh, fostered a relationship with. Their, uh, staff that they provide us with, uh, with regard to social and emotional supports and social work and, um, behavioral supports are outstanding. Uh, we've been really, really pleased with the work that they've been doing with our students. And let me just see if there's anything else that I missed. Uh, we have an agreement on there for Wilson reading tutor over the summer, as you know, some of our students get, um, academic services through Wilson Tutors throughout the school year, some of those students qualify for that service through ESY as well, so Mr. Kleinsman is, uh, providing that service for us over the summer. Um, and I think that's it, Mr. Fiddler, oh, I'm sorry, one more, um, there's a renewal of a settlement agreement on there. This is a settlement, that, uh, agreement that's been in place for several years, um, prior to me even being here. It expired, it was up for renewal, and the team, um, made the decision to, um, keep that student in their placement and renew the agreement. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, I think that was twenty-eight words, but they could, but that's, but that's okay. Any questions for Mrs. Harris? All right, thank you again, and of course, I will be asking that all of these be moved over to the, uh, June twenty-eighth meeting. And, Dr. Herring, that concludes the education committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler, and just to confirm, I believe we're moving the course recommendation, course request to, um, tonight's special voting meeting. Um, okay, Finance, Facilities, and Aquatic Committee, Mr. Mal.
Yes, we're gonna start off with item A, with a budget presentation by the one and only Mr. Ryan Feike. And I'm also gonna be passing out a twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget by function and object, well, gets that started.
Mr. Feike, could you speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry, I wanted to do a quick review of where we started and where we are today. Uh, back in the fourth, uh, May, April fifth presentation, uh, we started with the one point six seven seven million deficit from last year. We cut the budget last year in half, the deficit to one point six seven seven, we had a one point seven five percent tax increase last year. Uh, the preliminary budget in April, after I scrubbed it with the department heads, uh, had a two point one million-dollar deficit without a tax increase. Uh, revenues are up one point four one, uh, I estimated the state revenue to be about three percent increase, uh, local up a little bit, because collections were up, from the previous year, from ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent, uh, expenditures are up just under two percent. Uh, this budget maintains the current staff level, there's no program, program cuts, uh, there's activity fee included. Uh, we also have a tax credit to the firefighters, which is included, and at that time, uh, we're looking at a two point five percent, uh, tax increase to cut the deficit, uh, in half, which would have been to nine eighty-three. Sheldon, if you can do the next one. Uh, five sixteen or May sixteenth presentation, uh, we had the deficit down to one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand three thirty-three, which, now, I'm talking deficits, greater expenditures over revenues. Uh, a, part of that was a medical insurance, uh, cost decrease, uh, we added twenty thousand in advertiser revenue, we're gonna set up a, revenue committee, ad hoc committee, and work on trying to increase that, uh, state, uh, basic education fund, yeah, I increased it to three point five percent, because you're, at that time, you're in more from the state. Decreased the operational capital request, uh, we took the option to finance bus purchases over five years, uh, that also decreased the deficit. I was asking at that time to cut the budget in half, what we were asking for, with deficit in half, would have been a one point five, a seven-five percent increase, which is equal to point five nine nine eight, or the average, uh, sixty-five ninety-three increase to the taxpayer. Where we stand today, Sheldon, uh, I'm on the, the State Legislative Committee for Pasbille, and we're pretty confident that the state is gonna give the governor at least twenty-five percent of what he asked for in the beginning, because the state has a lot of extra revenues, uh, and that twenty-five percent that he asked for would go to every district, if they give more, it's probably gonna go to what they call Level Up Campaign, which districts that, uh, are high need, like Reading and Tito, would get more money than we want. Uh, so now I've increased that, uh, state revenue another three hundred sixty-three thousand, which would give us almost four and a half percent, uh, which would be twenty-five percent of the budget, um, and I, I'd put in there, due to messaging from Harrisburg, we're, we're pretty sure that's what they, they say, they're not gonna give the governor everything he asked for, but they have a lot of money that they didn't expect to have, uh, so they, they are getting increased education fund. Uh, but that was the good news. Bad news, uh, I had to increase expenditures by two hundred forty-five thousand, uh, we got our, uh, fuel bids in for gasoline, diesel, uh, paper product oils from this consortium, all the bids came in. This year, we're paying a dollar sixty-eight a gallon for diesel, uh, we buy it before taxes. The bids came in, they only bid for the first three months, and that was three forty-two a gallon for diesel. So inflation's hitting us, uh, I just got notice that it's almost a forty percent increase in electric cost, so I did put those increases in the budget. Uh, but that brings our deficit down to one point five one five, or nine, nine hundred forty-one thousand. Uh, a one point seven five percent tax increase will cut the deficit to seven hundred seventeen thousand, but if we go to what we, original plan was, to cut the deficit in half from the previous year, you know, one point six seven seven, that would only require a one point five percent tax increase. That will cut the deficit down to eight hundred thirty-four thousand five ninety-four. One of the things I wanna note, and I, I did ask, and we, we have a special committee, the whole, or should I say, a finance committee meeting before the voting meeting, uh, which will be on the twenty-eighth, uh, hopefully. Hopefully, by then, we will have definitive numbers from state and they'll verify what I'm saying here. And maybe we'll get a little bit more, I'm not sure. But right now, I'm pretty confident if we keep to our plan, we can only do a 1.5% tax increase to keep the plan. Some of the low-hanging fruit, which if you go to the, there you go, possible additional cuts. And I think these cuts would really be kicking the can down the road. In this budget this year, there's cafeteria table replacement for the high school and for the junior high, athletic uniforms, which is normal replacement, concert uniforms and band uniforms. Now, both the concert uniforms and band uniforms, we purchased half of them last year, that's half of them this year. We could always move that another year, but what I'm saying would be kicking the can down the road. There was talk about scheduling and, you know, I've seen it work in other districts, but I'm an accountant. That's almost a year-long study, but you bring in a professional consultant to actually look at our schedules. I would recommend we look at doing that, but that's not a short-term, short-term fix.
Yeah, that's not something that would be executed within the next tax year.
Right, because everyone's done their schedules the next year already. But that could be additional savings if you choose.
Sure. Right. Mr. Feig, is the solar farm, is it still a viable option yet?
The solar farm's still a viable option. They've talked to township. We're looking at some of both Wanton and Wrighton we can't use because it's in the flood or the drainage area. So, one of the questions they had asked is, can we put an array down below here on the watch? We lose the fields between here and the tennis courts or above the softball field up to the playground, that area.
Was this?
And that's, so I'm still trying to get the 110% of our electric use.
Yeah. Yeah, it just because that coincided also with the increased electric cost that you mentioned on the other slide there as well.
Right.
The recommendations for placement, is that coming from the zoning officer at the township? Is it?
I'm not sure because the contractor actually went to them and they said.
Oh, the contractor worked with them?
Yeah, the solar people. Because when we're looking at a solar farm, most economical way for us to do it is our purchase agreement. Someone else would build it. They would take the tax credits for the first five years. They would take full depreciation over five years, and at the end of five years, we'd be purchasing the farm. Or we could rent it from them, they still maintain it, you know. And to maintain them, most solar farms has cut the grass underneath it, nothing grows up to it. All the farms would be fenced in. And Sharon has been reviewing the contracts, and I think I sent you back their latest comments. So, they're getting close to, and she would say contracts are acceptable, but we still need the final drawings to bring back to the board and be placing the piles themselves. I mean, I think we can get almost three megawatts at a watt, but we can't go down into the valley because it's wetlands or something we can't, just can't put down there.
Yeah. What, I'm sorry, just an additional question here. What is the state of the cafeteria tables that you're due for replacement on?
The tables are not bad at the high school. The problem is they're all individual seats. And you'll have fifteen kids around a small round table and none at the next table. Between periods, you cannot, like clean the floors because you have to pick up all the chairs and lay and then bring the chairs back. And there's an issue with security or, you know, if a fight ever breaks out or something like that, it would be dangerous. So, the principal's asked to get rid of the actual tables and bring in tables that fold up with benches, like.
With the attached benches.
With attached benches. They're easy to clean, easy to move. And you can set them in rows instead of the tables that people get moved around. It's hard to move between them because there'd be too many kids, you know, at the same table.
Yeah, Mr. Mill, I went on a tour, a facilities tour at the high school, and we had a chance to see the cafeteria setup, tables and chairs. I mean, not only is it, the way it's set up is inconvenient and problematic, but they're also in pretty bad shape.
And chairs are really bad.
The condition, yeah, the condition is in really bad shape. And I think in terms of how, you know, the nature of efficiency and trying to clean the floors and that sort of thing is really greatly enhanced by a new cafeteria system. So, I really thought it was necessary when I saw it to kind of make the shift and the investment in the new tables and chairs.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation.
Can I ask? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
To hire consultants to review class schedules, can you speak specifically to that? What do you mean by that?
Oh, I'll let Dr. Ramm talk more. I've done it in a different district, and it was like a $12,000 bill. That was seven or eight years ago, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the costs would be right now. So, what, usually this happens with, would happen here with the junior high and the senior high schedules. But a consultant could come in and look at the schedules and be able to see if there's a more efficient way to be running the scheduling is basically what it is. And be able to still maintain the number of students, class sizes and things like that. You know, I think we kind of have this hybrid schedule at the high school. I think that's making the best use of the time, but maybe somebody could see something different. It kind of looks like we have some that are running all year and some that are running block. And I do think we're trying to fit as many as we could in there, but somebody that's been working with schedules, and there are experts out there, could come in and maybe look for some efficiencies that we might have.
And that's not something that the BCIU does?
No, I don't believe they have anybody that does that.
Thank you. And we usually start.
Didn't you use one of those scheduling experts in the past with junior? Was it worth it?
Well, it was a unique schedule that we came up with, that's for sure, but we moved away from that schedule to the current schedule that we have right now.
Sheldon, could you throw the pie charts up? And as they talked on ratings, the blue is our local effort or our local revenues, and that's why they like us more because we are, the reds is what we rely on, the state, the blue is what we rely on, our citizens. If you flip the next one. So, if you look at the expenditures by object. Can you enlarge that, please?
Sheldon, can you zoom?
Okay, salaries, the big blue is forty, I've got enlarged mine on my screen, too.
Next one.
Salaries is 42%. Benefits, another 29%. So, we're looking at 71% on personnel costs. Debt services, another 10%. So, we're at, I don't know if you can see that. So, we're basically at 81% fixed costs, if you want to call it that. Supplies, two-thirds of that supplies are cleaning supplies, toilet paper, you know, wax, whatever you want to call soap, things like that, consumables that we use. A third of that is supplies for the classroom. My biggest concern this coming year is if inflation keeps on going, is trying to keep within that supply budget. We just ordered wax this summer, and I ordered less because per gallon of wax is double what it was last year, per gallon of strippers, stripaws it was last year. So, some of the floors are going to just varnish the top and put a new wax coat on. It'll still look nice, but not as nice as we stripped it all the way down and re, you know, put four new coats on. But it's just a sign of times that I have to work within the budget. Other purchase services, you have things in there like, you know, your cyber charters is close to $2 million we're paying out to cyber charters. Special schools, you just approved some agreements there. Contracted services, things like that. Property services or third-party vendors that maintain a lot of our equipment or alarm systems or boilers, those types of things that we don't have in-house capabilities to take care of. Professional services or part of the psychologist, our legal team, those types of things. When I hear people say to cut supplies, I'm not really sure where to cut. You know, do we take a hundred dollars out of every classroom and not have, you know, birthday pencils or awards for the kids? I would not suggest that. If you need to really save money, where you're going to save it is in salaries and down the road, I think. We've been very frugal in this. I know people like to see us be more frugal because of the inflation rate that's going there, but we have the same inflation rate as everyone knows. And my biggest concern during the year is, you know, prices keep on going up and, you know, I'm going to make sure we have toilet paper through the end of the year, but I don't want to run out of things.
Yeah, I would also add as well, there was a suggestion floated around in public comment about capacity and closing down a school and moving students to another. The administration was nice enough to actually find a 2016 KCBA architect capacity study review, and all of our buildings currently are between, just looking at current capacity versus what it was in 2016. All of our buildings are between 86 to 95% capacity. There is no way that we would be able to accommodate something like that to save costs on shutting down a building. I just want to lay that out there.
Is our debt service due to go down in '23 or will it look the same as it does this year?
Debt services will level up through '28. You mean payment costs?
Correct.
Yes. That's why I asked Stifel here because when the accountants are here, they talked about when bonds are dropping off, if the payment doesn't drop off because of the ramp.
Correct.
I have a question and a comment, something I read on CNBC's website. It was a study by Moody's Analytics, which said that Americans are paying $341 a month more for goods and services this year than they were paying not 10 years ago, not five years ago, not even two years ago, but just one year ago. I hope we keep that in mind as we ponder a 1.5% tax increase. My question is, Brian, could we have a look at all of the retirements and resignations over the last year? I'm curious to know how many of those positions we refilled and how many of those positions we eliminated. Is that possible? I don't mean right now.
Well, no, we actually, over the last year, we actually increased three positions, and that was due to COVID-related funding for, you know, additional services. But I think, Chrissy, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we had turnover in the twenties this past year, right?
We've had a number of turnover, that's correct. I couldn't give you a number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get you a number. But what we experienced this year, and I believe it's COVID-related, is we had a number of classes that wound up being bubble classes, which caused us to hire additional teachers, both at Jacksonwald and Lorraine, which is somewhat unusual. Wanton's population stayed relatively stable. We typically have five teachers per grade level, K through four, whereas Jacksonwald and Lorraine at certain grade levels, we had to add additional teachers. At some point, that will most likely level off, like we're seeing in Jacksonwald's fourth grade, but, you know, it did require us to add additional staff.
I can answer one question. When you say the turnover, with those teachers being replaced, our teacher payroll dropped 178,010 from what we expected at the beginning of the year. And we, like I said, we've probably had close to 20-some educators change. So, there was some savings, but not like was pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic, someone retired at the top of the scale, usually brought them in near the bottom of the scale. For one year, there wasn't anyone graduating out of college because they didn't get their student teaching in, and it's, there's a shortage of teachers as there is. We're not finding anyone at the bottom of the scale. Or if you are, they're competing with other districts that pay more at the bottom of the scale than we do.
Well, that's what I'm interested in seeing. So, if we go back one year.
Right.
To July, budget year starts July 1st, right?
Right.
So, we go to July, retirement number one, X, Y, Z, Mr. and Mrs. X, Y, Z, salary. What did we do with that retirement number one? Did we refill it or did we eliminate?
We refilled every position or reallocated it to a different position.
So, we didn't?
There was no positions removed due to attrition, is what you're saying, right?
Not this past year with the pandemic.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Like when we reallocate, we are reallocated some to, more to social and emotional support.
Sure, okay.
Brian's correct. All the positions, we did have a number of retirements last year. All of the positions were reallocated because there was a need for additional support, particularly at the elementary buildings for reading. That's where the majority of the support went, that's where the reallocation of the positions went.
In my experience, working for, working at two Fortune 500 companies, is when the CFO came to the CEO and said, "We need to cut 3% or we're not going to make our numbers." So, every department in the corporation, one company had five subsidiaries, every department had to cut 3%. That's the only way you make numbers. You want to fire people, you can fire people. You want to not do that remodeling project in your department, you get credit for that. Have we ever done anything like that here at Exeter? I know you haven't been here all that long, but have we, do we have that kind of mentality here where we say, all right, we're looking at a 1.5% tax increase. Three of my colleagues on the board have already said they don't, they won't vote to support the tax increase, so what are our options at this point? As you stated, the blue and the red are the only two places that are rich for cutting.
And with PD and the state, we'd basically be doing it by attrition, not refilling positions.
Or you're cutting programs and services.
Or you're cutting programs and services.
So, it goes to that question, what are you comfortable in cutting?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, cutting isn't comfortable, that's why it's called.
Right, but that is ultimately, you know, the solution is if you're saying that you want to cut X percent across the board, you're going to affect programs and services.
Well, if I'm a, if I'm a fourth-grade teacher and I retire, and you don't replace that fourth-grade teacher, what do you do with those students who now are without a teacher for that next year? You have the same population of students kind of moving forward. And so, I mean, in education, it's a little bit different. You know, there's nobody else to pick up the slack unless you move those students into another, you know, so instead of having, you know, 25 kids in the classroom, you have 30 kids in the classroom, which is beyond our policy standards. So, I think that's part of the dilemma, John, is why, you know, that same model doesn't necessarily transfer to public education in a lot of these cases.
But to Mr. Fiddler's point, if we do have board members at the table that are not supporting the current budget, we at least need to come up with a second plan so we have a comparison that they would support. And I don't know that there's been given any direction from, from board members about where we should look at that or if we should, maybe we need to ask Mr. Feig to bring forward a presentation that gives us a zero-based budget and, and let us make a decision off of those two so we can see what those cuts look like.
Yeah, my concern is this, that we, on June 28th, we vote on the budget, it doesn't pass, and we have, what, two days to pick to?
You don't have anything because you have to advertise immediately.
Yeah, exactly.
And you can advertise the meeting.
So it seems to me we oughta, we oughta get our ducks in a row now. Um, and, and I like Tim's suggestion, if you could give us some alternative plans would be. So if we end up with.
Mr. Melz asked for a lot of uh information, you know, schools, I, I've been at some really tough schools that we had to cut, and the first thing he usually do is extracurricular.
Not, not instructional?
Non-instructural.
Yeah.
You know, uh, your, your clubs, I can give you just examples. Uh, salaries at the junior high at Pfizer's forty-two thousand, salaries at the senior advisors, a hundred and twenty thousand. Now you multiply that by one point four, four-three to get the true cost because you also get the users and social security on that. Um, I don't know if you wanna cut those types of programs. Uh, JV sports, uh, varsity sports, uh, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna be the one suggesting that.
I saw a number, I saw a number just today uh that we're gonna be spending north, somewhere north of twenty thousand dollars to refurbish and recertify football helmets.
Correct.
Well, do we want football helmets or do we want our forty percent of third graders who can't read at grade level to read at grade level?
Right.
So.
Alright, we, excuse me.
Go ahead, go, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Fiddler.
I'm paying just as a good portion at three hundred and seventy-five a month myself. In fact, I pay a little more than that. My electric bill went up a hundred bucks. So we have a conscious program of petroleum reduction in solar products which affects everything from food to transportation to me going to work in the morning, or whenever I go to work. We also have kids. We have a nationally recognized problem with our child, children's development, both men- men- mentally and academically. For me, I'll spend my extra five hundred dollar a month and I'll throw in another eighty-five for this school district to try to make up for what we did to those kids last year. And extracurricular activities, our football helmets, by the way, the reason they have to be recertified is they transmit to the athletic trainer the severity of when they take a head hit. And based upon that measurement, she can decide whether that young man is in danger of permanent injury or not. So it provides a health guard for those kids. If you don't wanna have football, then we'll knock it off. But I for one cannot see passing up on recertifying those helmets and having our kids liable to brain, I just read a whole article on brain test, brain injuries being done at the three universities, and we have no concept. I'm lucky to be able to uh walk accordingly, these people, because the brain injuries that happened to me when I was growing up are still impacting me now. So if you wanted to do away with, when we bought those helmets, I made the statement that if we can't afford to do it right, then let's not do it. And I still feel that way. If you don't wanna have the helmets that protect our kids, then do away with football program. But you are still affecting the socialization of our student body, which is nationally recognized as a problem. And we are investing in our future. We're not, I can do without my bottle of scotch for the month. Cause that went up to seventy dollars a bottle also. So, you know, there's priorities. And to me, right now, these kids are a priority because we've already screwed them. So, end of Bob Quinners rant.
Brian, I do have a question. How much are we charging in activity fees per student?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
And that's to compete in one or all.
It's a, it's a one-time fee charge?
One-time fee or?
For the year.
For the year, okay. And increasing that would obviously take the burden hopefully off the taxpayer directly to a parent or already another student.
Correct.
How, would it have any impact?
Uh, the hundred dollars brings in about sixty thousand dollars to our general.
Okay. So very small.
Very small.
So if you double that, you're, you're to a hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Right.
How much do we put into our AP program, all of them? The AP?
I'd have to add that, no.
So.
I, sure, can I just throw something in? So the question of how much do we put into our AP program? Um, so you'd have to look at textbooks and materials or whatever, but you, if you remove the AP program, you'd still have to have the teachers in place because those students would still need to be taking some classes. So, um, so you, you would not save staffing in those, in that cases. I shouldn't say for all of them. You might for some of the very small, save a, save a class here, a class there. But the teachers, remember at the high school, we talk about maybe, you know, eliminating a social studies elective and eliminating an elec- English elective, students have to still go somewhere. An elective doesn't mean they don't need the course. It means that they're getting to choose what those credits would be. And if you take one course here and one course here, you're not sa- and one course here and one course here, you're not saving a teacher because all of those teachers have different certifications. So you can't move a social studies teacher to English. And I mean, in elementary, we can move our teachers around and we can, you know, kinda combine and move some things around. But when you get into the secondary education, all of those teachers have different certifications. Even in the sciences, a biology teacher can't teach chemistry. I was a chemistry teacher. I couldn't teach biology. I couldn't teach physics. So taking one class here, one class there at, at that level is still not going to save you. You'd have to, I, at that point, you'd have to have just increased class sizes completely across the board. That's the only way that that would help. Did that answer what you were?
Yes, it did. I appreciate that.
Uh, I, I do wanna just add here, I know we're having a lot of conversation about options and budget, but items J or, I'm sorry, items H and items L within the committee uh will actually be discussing what the budget amount is going to be and the increase is going to be to take on to the voting meeting.
Right. And, and the other thing I, I do wanna mention, I don't like, parent it this way. Uh, the state, there is more money this year for homestead, farmstead. So the average homeowner is gonna see two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Last year was a hundred and ninety-eight, you know, change, so it's.
So it's a, it, you're.
I don't wanna net it, but they, they won't see much on the bill.
But that's only those who applied for it last year, correct?
Correct, sixty-six hundred.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, sixty-six, a little over sixty-six hundred uh homes, uh, every, in the homestead, farmstead. And then, um, so it's a little over fifty dollars.
Increase.
In, in, increase in that, and then the, um, the tax, if we would go with the one-point-five percent, that's a little bit over fifty-dollar increase on a home assessed at a hundred thousand dollars.
And.
Thank you, that was, that was gonna be my next question.
Hundred eight, right.
So my, my question is, um, forgive me, cause I'm losing the thought here, but so sixty-six hundred, you said people applied for that. How many homes are next to? Sorry, did you say?
Ten thousand?
Taxable properties.
Yeah.
Okay, so a little more than half.
Yeah, well, technically, there's also a requirement of living in your house and being occupied. Can't be a rental duplex type of thing.
But that's a finite amount of money, right, Brian? I mean, that for the farmstead, homestead exemption. We, let's say you get three hundred thousand dollars and you divide it by the number of
Yeah, one-point-six million.
Of households that apply for it, right? So it doesn't change based upon?
Well, change is based on what the state has.
Yeah, Mr. Feig's just trying to indicate that there, there will be at least some, somewhat of, I don't wanna quote it, a rebate, but a little bit of an increased rebate with coming back to homeowners because of the increase in homestead.
But again, those are only the people that signed up and did this last year. I'm just, you know. Yeah, you have to apply for it. Yes. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, you have to.
Once you're signed up.
Yeah, but you have to have signed up the previous year.
So Jason, you said the, the one-point-five would yield, would mean fi- a fifty-dollar increase per homeowner, is it?
We have, so it, it's all depends on your assessed value of your home. Um, so I had the, uh, one-point-five percent would be an increase of uh point five-one-three mils. Um, I don't know if, Mr. Feig, if you got a different number than I do here, but.
Well, I actually use the average assessed value, which is a hundred and eight thousand. So one-point-five, uh, point five-one-two-nine-five, it comes out to fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Yeah, so an average assessed home, it, it, so if your home's assessed a hundred and eight thousand, you're looking at about fifty-six dollars.
And that's fifty-six per amount, per what amount of time? Fifty-six per month?
Per year.
That's a year.
That's an annual, annual increase.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
I just wanna say, you know, based on where we were last month, and I continue to support this budget. I think that we've done a good job to, to make advances in, in, in where we're at. Um, our programs are successful in the district. We saw it today. Uh, we've saw it with the art program presentation, I think a month ago and two months ago with the, and same with, with, with the, uh, with the other liberal arts programs, with the music program. These are programs that if we even thought about cutting, would take years and years to rebuild them to where they are today. Um, I continue to support what I said last time, which was a one-point-seven-five percent tax increase, with the exception that if there was money found from the state, as we're showing here, that, that would go directly back to the, to the taxpayer, not to the, to the deficit. So if we were voting on this at the end of the month, I'd be in support of the one-point-five percent. One-point-five percent, apologies.
Right, and, and what I, I hope to have in hand is the state budget by the twenty-eighth, which, whatever that would be, if it's more than, I, I'm guestimating here, you know, I'm gonna put that in and take that down on the, the tax. But we'll be discussing that at the twenty-eighth committee meeting. The one thing at committee meeting, whatever you decide on to move forward to the voting meeting, you know, it's gonna change the agenda, which we'll make a note of it, we'll, we'll leave it blank. But it will also change the homestead by a couple cents because you have to base it on your millage. And based on your millage, it, it takes the, um, assessed value, any one underneath that, they don't get a hundred percent of it, so there, there's that money that they don't get gets added back to the other people. So it's usually a couple pennies change every time you change the election.
Yeah, I, uh, I mean, just from my end, it's very similar to what Mr. Morton just said. It, the, uh, we, you know, we have this deficit that we need to tackle. Um, that, you know, I think it was last year, uh, over three million, and you were able to cut it in half based on the last tax increase. Now we're down to, you know, the one, one point, we're over one-point-five million. I think we need to stay the course, uh, to do that. I'd love to say, no tax increase, let's take everything out of fund balance, but I don't want the, the district to go and solve it. You know, that's, that's not a good approach to this and I, you know, I, I, I know it's nice to say, no tax increase, but, you know, the, the, the reality is, we, we have this deficit that needs to be taken care of. And I am not in favor of doing anything that's going to affect our students, um, in terms of cutting program and services. So, uh, uh, I am in favor of a one-point-five percent uh increase. I, I think Mr. Feig has done a good job of getting costs down, uh, you know. As he showed up there, we were looking at a much bigger deficit. We were looking at a, a two-point-five percent increase to the taxpayers to, to also address the deficit and, and cutting that in half, and now we're, we're here, we're down to one-point-five percent. And, uh, I think we've, we've, we've done a good job of trying to get that down to a, as small of an increase as, as possible, possible for taxpayers without affecting the students themselves.
I agree with Jason and, and Mr. Feig, um, I think you've both done a great job looking at numbers and providing us resources. And, you know, while I would love to say also, we don't increase, I think I had mentioned before, I'd like to see a one percent, but I would be willing to agree to a one-point-five percent. Um, there is really nothing that we can cut, you know, and increasing an activity fee is gonna be a very small fraction um to decrease any type of tax increase. And, you know, our fuel costs alone are going up, you know, a hundred and fifty percent. So, you know, unfortunately, it's just kinda the world we live in, everything is going up in cost and in order to sustain and continue to decrease our deficit, I think, a one-point-five percent increase is appropriate.
So just to make sure I'm doing my math right, the, the fifty-six dollars per year, uh, for the one-point-five?
Correct.
Uh, divided by twelve is four, four dollars and sixty-six cents a month.
And, and that's for somebody that owns a property that's assessed a hundred and eight thousand. Some may have smaller, some have.
That's the average.
My house is two or three million dollars, so, you know, I'm gonna have to.
Wow, well, your, your tax bill's gonna be a bit higher.
Yeah. But that's four sixty-six on average for the, for the one-hundred-thousand-dollar house. In addition to the three forty-one that Americans are paying, uh, each month over the last year for goods and services, according to Moody's Analytics. So it's not a drop in the bucket, it's more, but it's three forty-one plus four dollars and sixty-six cents. Right? Am I doing the numbers right?
Yeah, when, when, when taking an average assessment of a home, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I just had a quick question for you, and this doesn't require a whole lot of extensive conversation, but, um, reflecting on our debt, we've got fifty-three million and, uh, change, you know, in terms of what remains on our debt. And we've got it set up so that it expires in what appears to be about six years.
Correct.
Okay, so what, what would happen? Is it possible to refinance that debt and expand it or extend it over, instead of six years, over, let's say, twelve years? And theoretically reduce the amount per year? I mean, because I'm seeing in two thousand twenty-nine, I, I don't see us building a new high school or building a new junior high or building a new elementary school. I don't see us incurring a major debt event. Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, we're one of those few districts that will have a debt ending point within, you know, ten, a ten-year cycle. Is there any possible way to kind of refinance that debt so that we can reduce by several million dollars a year the, the impact of that debt?
I, I, I looked at it, but I would not recommend it because the cost of interest is not worth it.
Okay.
Uh, you know, and in twenty-twenty-nine, uh, hoping I'm still here, but, you know, I would hope you would, at that time, you know, we're talking over six mils that you have to debt, cut that mils in half and then put the other two, you know, pay as you go for improvements because you're always gonna have boilers, you're always gonna have equipment that has to fail, you're, you're gonna have sidewalks that have to be replaced, you know, but, you know, pay as you go or, or build up a contingency fund for, for repairs, you're gonna have roofs down the road, you know, but, you know, we're looking at, you can cut it in half, that's four million dollars a year, you can, that's a lot to put for.
I mean, I just, that, that eight million.
Tennis courts that have big crack through them.
Yeah, but I mean, that eight million dollars a year is just a real onerous element of our budget that, you know, it would be nice to be able to kind of restructure that in some way if we possibly could, but I can understand.
But if you took that six, six mils out, that's basically for debt, we're down, we're not the highest.
It, it, it does drop us.
Millage in the county. And we're, right now, we're the second highest millage. You took that out, we'd probably be the third or fourth lowest.
Well, that's hopefully in our lifetime.
Any other discussion on Mr. Feig's budget presentation?
I'd just like to reiterate the comments that were made. I'm also supportive of a one-point-five increase based upon everything everyone else has said. I, I'm not one who wants to get, uh, into this process where we, uh, make any catastrophic changes to what we do as a district. We're, we're, we're an excellent school district, we wanna maintain that. And I think every time we cut into the core, you know, we erode it, uh, in some way. And, uh, I, I don't think one-point-five, in particular, the way it's explained to me in terms of the impact on the average household, is an extraordinary expense considering the inflationary times that we live in. Everything else is going up much more than that, much more than four, four dollars a month, if that's what it is. And, uh, yeah, if all my other bills went up just four dollars a month based upon what's been happening, I'd be, I'd be thrilled.
Brian, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work. I didn't need my comments and questions to indicate otherwise. I know you have been. Brian, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work. I didn't need my comments and questions to indicate otherwise. I know you have been, your nose has been to the grindstone. I I appreciate, I appreciate all these numbers, the graphs are very, very helpful. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item B, the twenty twenty two, twenty three Berks County Safety and Security Consortium. This is recommended to the Board of School Directors, approve an agreement to participate in the Berks County Safety and Security Consortium for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year at a cost of five thousand dollars. Um, from my understanding, the BCIU Safety and Security Administrator will provide consulting, or sorry, like, uh, yeah. It will provide consulting and technical services for participating members. Um, and uh, we can designate a single point of contact for all communication queries and recommendations in addition to guidance. I think this also plays into some, uh, we get a free look at a building assessment, and I believe it's twelve hundred dollars each additional building based on the documentation. So. Any discussion?
If I may. John, I asked you a few questions through email. Um, how long have we participated in the consortium? How have we taken advantage of it each year? And how can we go about scheduling a building assessment?
I have answers for all of those questions.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Mr. Fiddler might limit me again though to twenty eight words or less, so I'll do my best. But super relevant question, so I'm glad that you asked, Dr. Harry. Super relevant right now. Um, so I believe you had this uh agreement one year prior to me uh being here, but I have to double check on that for you. It is relatively new in the county. Dr. M, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're about four years in to this position being created at the BCIU. It was created um as a response to requests by superintendents across the county uh based on needs around comprehensive school safety and the need for support in that area. Based on all that legislation that came through, Act forty four, two thousand eighteen, being the big one that you always hear me reference um when we talk about school safety. Um, and the IU responded to that rec- request for support by creating this uh school safety program administrator at the IU. So you pay um a a small contract fee uh to access this service, um but it entails a bunch of things. It's not just about uh accessing building assessments. So it gives us the opportunity to participate in quarterly meetings with this program administrator, and I'm the person for the district that goes to those meetings and participates in those um with the program administrator. It gives us access to trainings by that administrator. So, for example, this year I've attended trainings um through this contract on human trafficking in Berks County, on child, all unpleasant topics, by the way, so sorry. Um, but uh child pornography in Berks County, um vaping and um current trends in vaping in Berks County and and across the state. Um, and a couple others. Um, so we have access to be able to attend as safety and security coordinators through this contract. And then we're able to turn that around and bring information back to the district and back to our building administrators through that. Um, it also gives us access to consultation. So um the Bill Gleason was the program administrator for quite some time. Um, he recently left the position, and Russell Del Rosario has taken over uh that position. But, for example, earlier this year, I worked with Bill on some consultation around some building assessment things that we needed some consultation on and some extra guidance on. So it's also sort of that phone call consultation, hey, I have this school safety issue. Can we talk this through? Can you give me some exact suggestions, you know, resources, that type of thing? Um, and then you do get one building assessment for for free. We are utilizing that, by the way. So I won't go into details about which buildings have been assessed and what the determinations have been on that. That's something I can share with you during, if you recall, uh, at the end of every year, I do an Act forty four Safety and Security Executive Session with you and give you that Act forty four report. So that's something I can share in a little bit more detail with you then. Um, but we are using that contract service for building assessments. We've had one building fully assessed. And then, this sounds funny, but half of another building assessed because we already had part of that assessment completed prior to me getting here. And we are getting caught up on using some old grant monies to be able to complete the results of that assessment project. Um, so that's what that contract covers in a in a nutshell. Um, I've also used it in a in previous employment for some, a few extra things like um, meeting with our local law enforcement agencies and having that program administrator connect with our local law enforcement agencies to help facilitate conversations around school safety. So all things that are possible through that contract.
Thank you. And just to be clear about what you're saying regarding the assessment. So we've had one full building.
Yep.
Finished up half.
Well, I've been here. I've, yeah.
Okay.
Having a little trouble discerning what may have occurred prior.
Oh, okay. So is that something that they would have record of? And, okay.
Working on that, my doctor.
Thank you. I'm kind of going to put you on the spot with that.
No, that's okay.
At what point do we ask for that assessment to occur? So is that, it's just me asking?
Yep, I can ask at any point throughout the school year. Yeah, there's no deadline, so I don't have to have it submitted by any point in time. And then we just work with the program administrators' schedule, when they can fit it in, they can come out. Um, most of the districts in the county belong to the consortium, again, because it was the district's request for that position and that kind of agreement to be created. So he's busy. Um, back when Act forty four first came through, the state police were doing what were then complimentary or free um building assessments um for districts. But there was such an abundance of requests because of all the mandates that came through through Act forty four. So, I mean, the waiting list ended up being years, right, just to get like a building done. And so that was another reason why the IU stepped up and kind of said, hey, like, maybe we can put this service together in the county and and offer it on an ongoing basis. Building assessments are ongoing, right? So you can't assume that you do it one year, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and then you're good, right? Like, you have to const- it's just like anything else. You have to constantly monitor and assess your needs. And just because you're doing a building assessment doesn't mean that there's anything significantly wrong with that building. It just means that you're constantly monitoring, looking for maintenance and looking for things that can be improved, looking at new research, new things, equipment, technologies that are out, so on and so forth.
Do, d- does the police department come into our buildings? And do we ask them to kind of look around and and check doors? And on what basis?
They do.
Regular basis do they do that?
They do. So actually, um, uh, part of PA State Code is that uh in the first ninety days of the school year, schools are required to have a security drill in which we invite first responders to participate in. So that's not just law enforcement, that's first responders. So we invite, you know, fire department, EMS, that type of thing. And that's really their opportunity to come in at each building when they do that security drill and walk around and say, hmm, I'm gonna take a look at that, or, you know, hey, I noticed this when we were doing the drill. Um, when a Watten did theirs earlier this year, I went over um to support Mrs. Cobble in that process, being a new principal. And so got to participate and watch a little bit of that sort of drill and walk through and and they did lockdown drill at that point in time. Um, and the officer that was there in attendance was very helpful in in pointing out strategies and different things for them to take a look at.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
A question about the drills. Um, are these tabletop exercises or are these full scale, everybody participates kind of drills, or somewhere in between?
So the student drills are are not tabletop drills. That's, the students are practicing lockdown drills. They're practicing reverse evacuation drills. So if you don't know what a reverse evacuation drill is, that's when students are outside and you gotta get them inside very quickly. Um, so it's student practicing drills and then them watching us practice those drills and giving us feedback.
How about for law enforcement and other first responders? Those full scale?
They're scheduled July, thank you.
Okay.
They're scheduled uh July for a couple of days to come and actually do that in um some of our buildings. Um, Dr. Heller and I have been coordinating that with them. Um, and we've actually asked for staff at the, particularly at the high school, to volunteer um just to be a part of that, to help our first responders, to have, you know, folks here, to have that be a little bit more.
Someone, without getting too graphic, someone plays a victim and has to be tended to by the EMS.
Without being too graphic, you got it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on item B? Okay, moving on to item C. Um, this is to authorize the district to participate in the Berks County Joint Purchasing uh Board uh for the following bids for fuel and for classroom and office supplies. Any discussion? Okay, moving on item D. Um, this is to authorize the district to participate in the CAFCO Collaborative Procurement Effort through the Lancaster Lebanon IU thirteen for the fiscal year of twenty twenty two, twenty three. Any discussion?
Uh, CAFCO is where they buy a lot of the food service?
Yes, yep. Yep. Um, and and that's from what I was looking at there, Mr. Fike, is there's uh about fifty school districts that participate and that go up?
And with these consortiums, every year we have to reapprove that we're we're a member of.
There's an annual, annual approval.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just like the bid before, every year, you know, you can't just assume you're gonna be the following year if every school's budget ends at June thirtieth, so they require separate motion. Makes sense.
Any discussion? Okay, moving on to item E. Uh, these will be, uh, this is an RFP discussion for the food service equipment for the senior high, I believe.
This is a a new serving line at the senior high. It's a a little bit better to handle and more efficient for students. This comes out of the food service budget, not out of the general fund budget. They have that in there for equipment replacement. Hopefully, that comes in what we expect it to.
When we do RFPs, I was just reading through our RFP process here. We have, if we have two, two uh selections that that come in close to the, to the lowest bid, do we offer them to rebid? You give them a second opportunity to come in lower?
On the RFP, you can renegotiate on an actual bid. You have to take the lowest bidder unless you have reason to believe that the lowest bidder will not satisfy your board's needs. So. So in RFP, you can ask them to rebid or or to renegotiate certain parts of the contract, um as long as you give it to both of them.
And what is our, what, I'm just curious, what's our threshold? So, you know, is it, if they come within a percent of each other, uh, you know, what what is our threshold to say to them, hey, take another shot at this and 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 s- see if you can sharpen your pencil?
Uh, there is no real threshold. It's my personal, if it doesn't come in what I, we have budget for it, I definitely want to renegotiate or re- rebid it uh because we can't afford it. It really comes down to how the board feels about the vendor, if they feel they can meet the requirements.
I guess I'm asking because, you know, my experience has been that if the, you know, if the bids are blinded from from vendor to vendor and you give two, or when you choose an opportunity to rebid, oftentimes you can get the price lower.
Yeah, but you have to give everyone the same opportunity.
So it would have to be everyone that bid?
Right, like, these bids are advertised for three weeks in a row. By law, we have to put in uh two different papers, a local paper, and, you know, if it's two local papers, the closest one we can get in that would run up three weeks in a row at the same time with Lancaster. So it's a Redding Eagle, Lancaster paper right now. By law, you have to put in two papers. Plus, we put in the website and we send it out to whatever trade organizations, you know, for the equipment vendors might be. So they'll send it back to other people. They come to our website, pull up the information, you don't have to sign in. So we might have thirty or forty people look at the the RFP and maybe five or six respond to it. Uh, just like we did with the copy, the RFP, I would expect it four, we'd get five responses. One, I went, went out with clear blue sky.
And if you ask for rebid, you would have, in that situation, you would have to take, you would have to offer that to all five again?
Then they ask, you know, for uh sharpening pencils if we're calling.
Right, and then an outside vendor would have an opportunity to jump into that on the second time.
Correct.
That's what I was asking. Okay, perfect. So you can't just select your bottom two bids.
No, it's said that we're not. We're getting the uh best price out there and we're not awarding it to a favorite.
Gotcha, understood, thank you, yeah.
Uh, I I just make a note in the um in in the RFP also, uh, Mr. Fike is aware of this, but the the uh, it it says Wednesday, June seventeenth. There is an addendum that we'll go out to correct that. I do believe it's supposed to be Friday.
Courtney already said she was working on it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Um, any other discussion on item E? Okay, moving on to item F. This is to appoint Alana C. Panzer as treasurer for the Xerion Township School District for a period of one year, effective July first, twenty twenty two, with a yearly stipend of two thousand dollars. Uh, this is a annual requirement for the state that we have to appoint the treasurer. So this is a uh a typical thing for us. Any discussion?
One, one thing I want to note is my policy is whenever we have something like this, there's an extra stipend, actually put it on the agenda, not just the so the board knows that there's a stipend on there. This has been stipended for years, but my policy is to put the stipend on with the condition.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Uh, Jason, you need a dollar sign on the two thousand.
Yes, um, make sure that somebody can get a dollar sign on the agenda. Thank you. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that was
We know it's not crypto.
Yeah, it's not Bitcoin. That's the case, I'm gonna be treasurer. Um, any other discussion on item F? All right, moving on to item G. Uh, this is to appoint two delegates to participate in the PSBA Delegate Assembly to be held on Saturday, November fifth, twenty twenty two. Since we are a school district of the third class, we are allowed to pick a maximum of two people uh as voting delegates. Do we have any volunteers? Yes.
I I did participate in this last year.
That's all I said. So it, I, sounds like a volunteer. There's a ringing endorsement.
Say that.
Mr. Mel, I'll volunteer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. So we have one volunteer.
Last year it was virtual. I think this year it'll probably be in person, in Mechanicsburg.
There 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 is gonna be both options, I believe, for what the documentation says. They'll allow in person and digital.
It says a hybrid too.
Mr. Quinter, you would like to volunteer? Perfect, thank you. Okay, we have our two voting delegates. Any other discussion on item G? All right, moving on to item H. This is where we will be talking about the general final general fund budget for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year in the amount of blank.
And that we plan to set on the twenty eighth committee of the whole, or.
Finance committee meeting.
So we are gonna set that on the twenty eighth and the, and prior to the voting meeting.
Well, right now, you could, if you want to put the number in, we have tonight, but we really can't vote on it. We just have a consensus.
Right.
But I I I am hoping that we have a governor's budget, a state budget before the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Which I think we will. Uh, and maybe we'll get lucky that there'll be additional monies. And I'll take that money right off the, the uh tax increase. But that number we'll have right now is gonna be one point five percent tax increase as we get additional money. And that will affect this and homestead exclusion. That will only change by a couple cents.
So so question with the uh, with with the timing then on that, since we're gonna get some some things finalized in that uh, in that finance committee meeting prior to the voting meeting on the twenty eighth. Uh, are we, uh, i- i- is the plan then to amend the agenda, the voting agenda for for that night?
Well, if we have, if I have the governor's budget at least twenty four hours before that, I can put it, you know, on the agenda so you don't have to amend it.
But that's given that we all come to some consensus on a tax increase.
Well, that's gonna be a recommendation. If you change anything on the committee, then you're gonna have to amend it.
And then we're gonna have to amend it. And then we're gonna have to amend it.
Okay, right.
So, I guess the, the question is, do we wanna have the discussion? I, I guess we could wait until the last item to have the discussion about consensus on tax increase, if that's, sounds like what we wanna do, to at least have something to go to. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion on item H? Item I, um, this is to approve, uh, a myriad of different insurance coverage for the period starting July first, twenty twenty-two, going through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion?
Mr. Feig, I have a question.
Sure.
This increase of twenty-six thousand in totality, what is the percentage, like, is there a consistent percentage that goes up every year?
Well, most of it's in, included in the, uh, property. Our property increased premium-wise by four percent, but value-wise for replacement by twelve percent because of the, the, uh, construction industry, if everything burned down or had to be, uh, replaced, like, you know, replacement costs, it was about a twelve percent increase. So, the property, um, I think we have two hundred and fifty million dollars of property we had to replace every building, uh, increased by about twelve percent. The, um, umbrella stayed pretty well, actually, uh, went down. School leaders, uh, went up slightly, areas of missions. Privacy, uh, that was, I was really surprised, uh, most districts is doubling and, uh, network liability or cyber liability, if you wanna call it. Uh, I got the report, I sent it to, uh, Joe. We got a score of seven hundred, it's like a Pythagoras score out of eight hundred, which is probably the highest in the county because everything we do. Uh, they did a, a complete review with Joe and the team on our, our cybersecurity efforts. Uh, the only thing that was, um, not be acclaimed is if we didn't keep, uh, what they call multi-factor identification on, or authorization on the PACMS and, and we actually have triple instead of double on those. All were logins, multi-factor identification, and we're moving to everything. They could not find any actors in their system, which was good. So, uh, it's an increase, but I was surprised that wasn't that much of an increase. Workers comping up a little bit, um, from prior year, basically due to, uh, wages. But one thing to note, uh, we're gonna be getting back, I think it's eighteen thousand dollars in dividends ten months into the year. Uh, we went into a consortium last year where if your claims stay under eighty percent, you get a dividend, it's under sixty-five percent, you get a higher dividend, and we're getting a decent dividend back from the previous year, so a refund in the prior year. So actually, we're gonna be net less, you know, but that's also included in the revenues as a refund of prior year expenses. But, like, most of the reason for the increase is the cost of replacement went up.
Any other discussion on item I?
And I do wanna say, we did quote it with three other carriers and CM Region was the best. There was one that came in about thousand less when we looked into it, our deductibles were twenty-five, they had a fifty thousand dollar deductible. Uh, they didn't take the chance in saying, like, Auto's only had a five hundred dollar deductible and, or, or certain things like, uh, personal property of employees that lost you know, five hundred dollar deductible, they had like a fifteen hundred dollar deductible and only, it'd go up to five thousand, so. We did shop it with others that we had. Shopped with six different, two of them gave us quotes back and three of them touched those. And the one, they didn't have all the coverages.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion on item I for insurance coverage? Okay, moving on to item J, the Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution. Um, yeah, we did talk a little bit about this during, uh, or after Mr. Feig's presentation. The number, uh, that we were looking at was, I think at least according to the documentation, is two hundred and fifty-three, sixty-eight, um, for the, uh, the Homestead exclusion. But, Mr. Feig, the one thing I did notice in, in this is the calculation is based off of a point six increase in mill, so that, that would go a little lower, right?
Yeah, well, it's actually a point five nine, just rounded up, but it's actually a point five nine.
Yeah.
Increase in mill, so that will change by cents when I go to one and a half percent because it's, it's, there'll be people that, right now, I think it's what, uh, five or six thousand, let me see here, I haven't pulled up, is the exclusion now.
Yeah, the, the total exclusion is six thousand, six hundred and forty-five Homesteads and Farmsteads.
Yeah, but where the next page is the, uh, so right now, each property has a approved, assessment above seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, will get that. If they have less than that, they get a portion of that.
Yeah.
So if the millage changes, that might raise that or lower it, so there might be one or two in there that won't get their full amount, so that extra that they didn't get will go back into the pot for the others, so usually, you know, changes that are penny or two.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item J? Okay, moving on to item K for per capita tax. This is to approve the per capita tax for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year for the attached resolution. Uh, I believe the per capita tax that we charge is, uh, five dollars for any resident eighteen years or older. Resides within the school district. Any discussion? And last but not least, item L, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, real estate tax millage. Any discussion to kick us off?
Sorry, no, I just have a quick question for, um, Mr. Feig. Last, so, and I, I apologize, the Homestead Farmstead, what was it last year?
Hundred and ninety-eight dollars and some odd cents. It was only about one point, it was less than one point four million revenue from the, we gave revenues last year. And that's where it comes from.
Right, I, yeah, I couldn't remember it from last year, thanks, Mr. Feig.
So, Mr. Mel, you had mentioned before, one point five would be an increase of point five one two nine five, is that correct for millage?
Y- yes, I, I, I had it rounded up to point five one three zero, but, yeah.
So, point five one two nine five.
Right.
And what would that, what would the total millage be?
Thirty-four point seven oh nine. I have to get, I have to.
Thirty, I, yeah, I have thirty, thirty-four point seven oh nine eight is what, what I came to.
But we go out to five digits, I'll have to change that to. Just change it a little faster.
Well, just from what we said before, it looks like we have two hundred thousand dollars that we could cut out of the budget if we cut out the cafeteria tables and the, the uniforms. And then after that, we would have to go into, um, programming. So, I guess we should look at that two hundred thousand dollars and, or programming if that's otherwise than that, I think we would be at the one point five.
Thirty-four, seven oh nine, seven five.
So we had at least three members that said they'll, they'll support the one point five percent. Is there any, anyone that has recommendations for, for cutting to make that tax increase smaller?
Well, Allison just mentioned the two hundred thousand dollars, but I was wondering what that two hundred thousand dollars, is that a drop in the bucket? Remind me, what would that?
I, I, I think I, I used the word kick the can down the road and, you know, um, we probably should replace those cafeteria tables. Dr. Hamburger took a tour and he, I think you agree.
I completely, I completely agree with that, I'm just wondering what's the?
The others are uniforms that we've already bought half, it was a, a two-year project.
But if we did it, would it decrease the percentage? How much would it decrease the amount we'd have to raise taxes?
What, what the two hundred thousand?
That's what I wanted to know, I'm sorry.
Reduction.
And I appreciate that, Dr. Hamburger.
Uh, a half a percent equals two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
A half a percent?
A half a percent?
Half a percent, uh, one percent is four hundred and seventy, so every tenth year forty-seven thousand.
So if we, as you said, kick the can down the road on the, on the two hundred thousand dollars here for cafeteria table replacements, athletic uniforms, concert uniforms, band uniforms, uh, we could go down to one percent. I, I'll just take a suggestion, do we wanna go around the room again like we did last time and get everyone's thoughts, so we can at least see if there's a consensus on rate increase?
Do we need to have a consensus, or do we just need a, a majority of board members in favor of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, a majority of board members, I guess a majority consensus is what, what I should've said. Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm more comfortable waiting to see what the state, uh, has to say, and we'll know that on the twenty-eighth, or is there a good chance we'll know that on the twenty-eighth prior?
Um, being told we should know before the end of the month.
Okay.
They're back in session, but, you know.
Yeah.
They, they, they do know, they have a lot more money, they probably do.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'd be more comfortable waiting to see how much, if any, how much more we'll get.
I, I do wanna caution, I do wanna caution all of you that you can't get to the twenty-eighth and decide that you're not passing the budget, you're going to have to remeet, re-advertise, and even then, you run the risk of missing your deadline.
Yeah, my, so, I, I understand what you, what, what you mean, Mr. Fiddler, but my recommendation would be that we at least have something, uh, to take to the voting meeting now, and if we need to, we could amend the agenda on the twenty-eighth, based on further discussion at the, uh, finance committee meeting that takes place prior to that. Uh, but I, I do feel like we need to come to the voting meeting with something, based on what we know now.
But what I would like is if you could take the one point five percent and direct me to take whatever additional state money, take it off the taxes and then?
Yeah.
Put that on the, to make the whole meeting and voting agenda.
That sounds reasonable to me.
That works for me.
One, two, three, four. Four yeas, five.
Five, okay. I, if, as long as we have a?
All I needed was five to say to move it.
Yeah, as, as long as we have a, a, a majority going, going with that notion, I, I think we're okay to, to move forward with the, uh, one point five percent increase with the understanding that, uh, should there be more state funds, that we will reduce that increase amount prior to getting that agenda posted.
Right.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion on item L? All right, Dr. Hearing, that is it for my committee report. Yeah, if, if we're basing it on one point five percent, um, Mr. Feig, you, you would know what the?
Give me a second, I can do that right now.
Yeah.
Is that eighty-one, eight oh five, three ninety-one?
It's total, eighty-one, eight oh five, three ninety-one.
I'm glad you said that first, Mr. Feig.
I, I used that. Used a fun balance, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand.
All right, Mr. Mel, you sure you're done?
I, oh, unless there's any others.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Thank you, miss.
Is there any other surprises?
I appreciate that. All right, Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan, you're on.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. Uh, first thing we have is A, the dental plan discussion about approval for, uh, United Concordia as the, uh, new dental insurance provider for the employees of Exeter Township effective July first. Dr. Haller, do you have more information on that?
Sure, so, um, we had used, uh, United Concordia before, and then we made a change to a different dental plan, uh, because it was our goal to provide better dental coverage, uh, for our employees as a way to attract and retain. Um, what we found is the other dental insurance that we had used, um, is not widely accepted in this area and was actually, um, more of a cost and, and did not achieve what we set out to do. Um, so it's our recommendation that we return back to United Concordia, um, for our employees, uh, which re, is, um, meets what we are required to provide as far as dental coverage under the, uh, contract that we have with our employees.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, moving on. Uh, next, I'm gonna put B, resignations, C, retirements, D, appointments, E, change of status, and F, leaves of absence, and G, summer professional development. Any discussion on these items? Okay, moving on. H, contract negotiations. Again, a discussion, uh, the contracts for the food services and Exeter Township Education Association, as well as the Act ninety-three and confidential secretary's compensation plans will be brought to the board on June twenty-eighth at the board voting meeting. Is there any discussion? Okay. Moving on, finally, uh, I, which is, uh, course requests. Is there any discussion on course requests? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Hearing, I would, uh, I'd like to ask you, uh, it'd be my recommendation that we move A, the dental plan, B, resignations, and G, summer professional development to tonight's voting meeting.
Sounds good, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Hearing. We have, um, two policies on the agenda for the voting meeting. One is for second reading, uh, the Food Services eight oh eight policy, which has been subject to previous conversation and discussion. Um, the, the one that's newly introduced is the revised student discipline policy two eighteen, and I'll let, uh, Mrs. Harris, uh, uncover the highlights of that change.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Um, so a few changes to the student discipline policy, of course, you'll see the addition of language in there related to threat assessment teams, you've heard me speak on that previously, you've seen us add that to a lot of policies this year. Excuse me. Um, you'll see additions and clarifications in there around the language about when school districts get involved with regard to discipline as it relates to off-campus activities. PSBA's previous policy was pretty passive. PSBA's previous policy was pretty passive in that area with regard to their language. So they really just cleaned that up and made it a little a little more clarifying in nature. Um, so that everyone has a clear understanding of when schools get involved in um off-campus activities as they relate to discipline. And that's largely when, uh in summary, when they have a significant or disruptive impact on the school environment. Um, the other addition to this policy is something that's been advocated for as a best practice for a long time. As it relates to disciplinary practices, but as you often know, it takes policy a little while to get caught up sometimes on what best practices are. So there's some language in there around uh restorative practices and the use of restorative practices. Um, with regard to what we're doing with discipline and we use a lot of jargon in education. And so I think of restorative practices as discipline plus, right? So to take it back to Doctor M's statement um at the beginning of the meeting regarding school safety. And regarding finding students who are struggling and helping support our students. Discipline is, part of that process is finding our students who are struggling, right? When a student has a disciplinary infraction, that tells us something's wrong, right? And so, of course, we issue discipline and we issue consequences like suspensions and detentions and all of those things. But it's also our obligation to look at what's the root cause of that behavior. And how we can help that student A, get support, but B, repair the relationship. That's been damaged by that infraction, right? So in some cases, disciplinary infractions damage relationships with another student, right? Because it's a student-student fight. In some cases, it's about repairing the relationship with perhaps. A staff member, right, that that um had that a student used inappropriate language in front of or something like that. And in some cases, it's about repairing the infraction with the larger school community, right? When it's a more significant disciplinary infraction. So all restorative practices is is just language around that idea. That in addition to issuing a consequence, you're looking at what supports you can provide to that student. And how you're helping that student reengage and kind of fix what went wrong. That resulted in that disciplinary infraction. Um, so you'll see language added to that. You'll also see um when Mister Wangia uh presents. Um, the student handbooks and the student code of conduct to you coming in July, I believe, Mister Wangia. Um, you'll see that we included that language about use of restorative practices in conjunction with discipline in there as well. Because one, our policies, our handbook and our student code of conduct all reflect that same practice. So those are the major revisions to the policy, Doctor Hamburger.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. Any questions about um the policy or the other policy?
I do have a question, if you don't mind. Um, so when I was reading over this, the. I think the one thing that jumped out at me was the on and off-campus activities. And so how? How do you see us going about being? With a school district being disciplinarian or whatever? When it comes to being on campus there outside of school time, but part of here. And say threatening on social media.
Yeah, so the so it's sort of an umbrella of how much of an impact does that off-campus behavior have? On what's happening here in school? And one of the things that we do find ourselves acting on most often as an off-campus activity is that social media activity, right? Because if it's a social media event that occurs between two students and it's not having a lot of impact on school. And it's more of an individualized thing and, you know, they're dealing, it's happening outside of school, they're handling it outside of school, that's one thing. But as you've seen, there's a lot of social media things that happen after hours, right? Between kids and things that are posted that have a huge impact on school and a huge impact on the school environment. So it's making that judgment of, okay, you know, what kind of impact is it having on us here in the school environment? And it is, is it something that we need to take action on?
Yeah, I think, you know, Mrs. Montane would probably tell us that there's plenty of, there's a lot of case law. On this topic, you know, and and this policy is actually formulated, I think, through some of the cases. That, you know, they've gone through where they've had to determine, you know, whether or not this is. The district can't actually discipline somebody for behavior that occurred outside of a school setting.
Correct, there is um, it the, some of the changes to this policy are helpful in kind of in an inverse way. To make it clear to people what you cannot discipline for. Even though there may be a lot of hue and cry in the community, I saw this posted from this student's, you know, private. Personal device and, you know, it was a threat to some other kid and, you know, come in school and discipline this student. And and the case law, uh recent case law actually, and this policy reflect the fact. That you probably are not in a position as a school district to impose discipline. In many of those types of circumstances, even though it seems like you ought to, because it involves your students. Um, but very often you would not be permitted to. And I think that the the publishing this kind of updated or revised policy helps everybody to understand. We have limitations as a governmental entity on what we can discipline for. When it's not our s- our machines, our devices, and it's not in the school setting. So I think it's very useful that way. Yeah, and it goes back to how much of an impact is it having directly during the school day on the school environment?
Wasn't there a celebrated case in Schuylkill County about a a young woman who didn't make some team? Who held up a sign and posted it, okay.
I I might not use the word celebrated, but yes, there was a very significant case in that regard.
That's all for our report, Doctor Herring.
Thank you, Doctor Hamburger. Okay, now we move to public comment, but there's no one signed up, so we're not doing that. Um, we're gonna move forward the following items to our special voting agenda for this evening. Items five E, conference requests, items seven A, B, and G. And then the following items will be forwarded to our June twenty eighth voting agenda. Please bear with me. We're gonna move over the meeting minutes. Textbook approvals. Field trips. Settlement agreements. The items under five G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. Then under finance.
I think it's everything but A.
Everything but A, yes. B, C, D. Does E get moved forward as an RFP?
And then vote on it, okay.
Okay, um, F, G with Julie Schaefer and Robert Quinter. H with eighty one eight oh five three nine one. I, J, K, and L with one point five percent. Personnel Committee, C, D, E, F, H, and I. And Policy Committee, first and second reading. And I believe that is all of it. This point, are there any board members that would like to be heard? Okay, if not, that concludes our June Committee of a Whole Meeting. I declare the meeting adjourned. I'm sorry.
From Mrs. Gardella. And my response, Nan had expressed desire to make it part of the record. So I would like to give copies of both emails to the uh. To Mister Feig so he can record it as per the uh minutes.
Accepted, thank you. I think everyone's present. Okay. I'd, uh, I'd like to now begin our Wednesday, June first, twenty twenty-two Special Board Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Mr. Feig, can you please take real call?
Dr. Ann Herring?
Here.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mel?
Still here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montane and the members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Muszuski, Substitute Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of People's Services, Dr. Christie Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator as well as our Board Secretary. Superintendent, report.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I only have one item, um, under the report for tonight. Um, just like to mention, if we remember, um, last month, if that's when it was, or two months, um, Dr. Flam had presented the district's comprehensive plan, and we had that open for public comment. Um, during the public comment period, there was, um, no community feedback, so we will, um, recommend approval of the comprehensive plan at the June twenty-eighth voting meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Muszuski. Um, next is public comments, and we have no one signed up. So we'll move on to um, payment requests. If there's no objection, we'll adopt a motion to approve payment request dated May seventeen, twenty twenty-two to June first, twenty twenty-two. Second. I'm hearing no objections. Payment requests are approved. Okay, next, Education Committee, Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. There are seven, I believe. And, um, here's the motion on the table.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, looking at item A, dental plan approval is recommended the Board of School Directors approve United Concordia as the dental insurance provider for the employees of the Exeter Township School District effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Dr. Herring, uh, although I, um, I don't believe this is a violation of the Ethics Act, if I would vote on this, uh, considering it benefits the greater whole of the employees, I will be choosing to abstain, uh, because it benefits my spouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. And you have to fill a form out for that, I believe?
That is correct. Mr. Feig will probably have one for me over there. I see him getting his folder out already.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Moving on, uh, going to, uh, put B, C, I think it's just B and C. B, B and C together, so is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following resignations, and is recommended the Board of Directors approve the following teachers in prep- preparation to present during summer professional development flex days and attend third-day training.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next is public comment on any topic. No one here for any comments, so we will, uh, move from there. Um, would anyone on the board like to be heard at this moment? No? Okay. The board will be meeting tonight for an executive session to address personnel matters. I'd like to wish all our seniors an early congratulations on their graduation next week. Good evening, everyone. Please remember our next meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.